Good morning, and I want to call the order of the August 8th, 2017 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And I want to thank all who joined with us this morning, and welcome. And as we get started, I'll have Flo Evans, our clerk, call the roll, establish a quorum, and then she'll make a couple of brief announcements, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and get started with the morning's business items. So, Flo?
Good morning, Supervisors. Serna, Kennedy, Peters, Frost, Natoli, and you have a quorum.
And I would just note that Supervisor Serna will not be joining us today. He had an urgent family matter to attend to, and so he won't be here with us today. Thanks.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, August 11th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please take a moment to silence your electronic devices.
Okay. Thank you for the announcements, and nothing further than Mr. Kennedy, would you please in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, please?
(Inaudible)
Okay. We have any items to be continued or held over?
I have a few notes here. Okay, so you do have your consent matters, items 1 through 27, and then you also have an off agenda. I will need a motion to take up the matter. It's a received and filed, so we'll only need one motion.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And that would have been for Supervisor Don Natoli, travel to Atlanta, Georgia, July 21st through the 22nd, 2017, to attend the annual conference of the North American Council on Adoptable Children. And then for items 1 through 27. Item 16, you are adopting an ordinance adding Chapter 3.33 Title III to the Sacramento County Code relating to establishment of an urban agriculture incentive zone, and you waive reading on this on July 25th. Item 18, you are introducing an ordinance providing a procedure for collecting street and safety lighting charges in CSA 1. You're waiving full reading and continuing to August 22nd for adoption. You're also receiving and filing the engineer's report and written reports for fiscal year 1718, and designating August 22nd for the public hearing, and directing staff to provide notice. On August, excuse me, on item 19, I do need a motion to continue this item to August 22nd. This is a report back on flood protection actions for the community of Point Pleasant, and to direct staff to proceed with various flood protection efforts for Point Pleasant.
Okay. Just, I would move to continue that, but I just-
Second.
Okay. And a question I have, though, we will be prepared to have that report on the 22nd, ready to go. I know we're having a community meeting this week, but, okay, so we'll be-
We should be completely ready for that.
All right, because the rainy season isn't all that far off, even though it's been 100 degrees outside, so, okay. All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And that concludes my notes.
Okay. I would just note, too, if anyone wishes to address the board on any items on the consent calendar, or any items not on the agenda, please fill out a speaker identification form, and we'll call upon you either now or as those items are called. So, I'm going to turn to my colleagues and see if there's any items you wish to address or pull up. Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Peters?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Like the record reflect, I'm recusing myself on items 2, 13, and 15 due to a potential business conflict.
Okay, so noted. Any other items? Anything else? Okay, Ms. Frost? Any items? Okay.
All right. And I would just note on item 4, it's been a long time to work. I think the paper may be reflective of the amount of effort and time that's gone into that. It's on the consent calendar on the McClellan Agreement, and I want to just thank our staff. I know it's been, and I know we have Mr. Kettley and members of his team that are here in the audience as well, and I don't know if you were going to address anything on the consent calendar, but it's been a lot of work, and again, it's been a very strong partnership, and again, a lot of good things. I think I last heard 17,000 jobs created out at McLean? Oh, more? 20,000? Is that close?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah, okay. Higher than 17, but hidden for 20, so, at any rate, compliments to all who put this together, and a lot of work, and a lot of negotiating. And Mr. Leonard, I know you've been on point with this, along with Mr. Gill and others, so, all right. If there's nothing further, I had no one signed to speak on any item on the consent calendar, so, last call before I take a motion. All right? See you in a minute.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
(Inaudible).
Okay. Chair would second it, and then noting recusals on items 2, 13, and 15 by Supervisor Peters.
And also excluding 16 and 19, because you guys have re-voted.
Yes, right. Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Supervisor Natoli, before we go to timed items-
You can do some introductions.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Peters?
I wanted to make an introduction of Doug Sloan. He is our new Waste Management Recycling Director. He's been with the county for about seven years, and I'd like to have him come up to the podium, address the board, and share a little bit about himself and the vision he has for the department.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Gill. Good morning, Doug. Congratulations to you.
Morning. Thank you very much. I'm very humbled to be here today, and very appreciative of the confidence that the board, Mr. Gill, Ms. Newton, and Mr. Penrose have had in getting me to this position. I'm very excited about the department. We've got, I've got probably one of the best staffs that are dealing with waste management and recycling issues in the state. I have some people that I believe are industry experts that are helping us out, especially when it comes to some of the sustainability programs we run at the landfill. So, I couldn't be more pleased to be up here and in a position where I can lead the department going forward. I've spent most of 30 years in the waste and recycling industry, in a variety of different positions, running different companies, from open landfills to closed landfills, to transfer stations, pretty much the whole gamut of what you can do. Had some wonderful experiences. It's been very rewarding. If, it's one of those careers that, if I could put a plug in for us, people don't think about waste management and recycling in terms of a career long-term, but it's not, we're very innovative in the way we approach things, and we spend a lot of time reacting to state legislation that changes our world immensely. Over the next three or four, five years, we're going to be back before this board with some issues, because the state is changing the way that we're going to handle food waste and organics, both to get to a 75% diversion rate, and then making sure that organic material is not in the landfill. And so, that's going to make, that's going to create an opportunity for us to change the program somewhat. So, we'll keep you apprised as we go through that process. My priorities for the department are employees, employee development, succession planning, trying to provide the best we can for employees, customer service. We, as you know, we have a very good record within the community of providing customer service to all the residents. And then, third would be safety, and we've spent a lot of time and effort improving our safety program, and it dovetails into everything we do. It's not an isolated program anymore. It's dovetailed. So, again, just thank you very much. I'm looking forward to working with everybody, and I can't be more appreciative of the opportunity.
Great. Congratulations, Doug. I think it's great, and I think you do have a very good department, very innovative, and for people who are looking for a green job, it's interesting, it's in waste management, really.
Yes.
So, congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Doug, I would offer congratulations, and just, I know that we've recently noted 50 years operating the Kiefer landfill at its current location, and that has been without its challenges over the years, and certainly, I think, part of us being a good neighbor to our surrounding property owners and residents has certainly been key, as far as I've seen it over the last 20-plus years, and working through that, and I think, you know, how we manage buffer lands, how we continue to deal with, you know, some of the approaching development that will, you know, bring people and activity closer to the landfill is going to present some, you know, some challenges, and maybe some opportunities as well, but I would just always keep that in mind, that, you know, safety and certainly customer service are important. Part of that customer service is that we have this regional asset, and I think how we now manage the day-to-day operations there, and certainly handle recycling, and some of the things you mentioned, but also our, kind of our fit within that puzzle of properties where we have both rural and some approaching suburban, and we have, you know, buffer lands with, you know, wetlands and so forth, and a piece of what, you know, obviously you as director and your staff do, but I would just say that's really key, in my view, and certainly I've appreciated your predecessors, and we'll look forward to working with you on that and many other issues related to waste management and recycling, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right. Mr. Gill, any other announcements?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. All right, that takes consent calendar, and now we've got some presentations, I believe, so.
Yeah. Item 28, recognizing Michael Miller for 30 years of service.
Okay.
Mike Miller, Contract Services? Hi, everybody. I made some notes, so I don't babble on and on.
Okay.
Am I allowed to talk for a minute?
(Inaudible).
Okay. You know, I started with Sacramento County in 1977. If you do the math, you'll see that's 40 years. There's a 10-year lapse in there. Well, to be completely honest with you, I wasn't a very good employee when I worked for Sacramento County between 1977 and 1990. I got fired.
(Laughter).
You know, I always wanted to come back to Sacramento County. I love Sacramento County. I love working here. I love the people that work here, and so I kept taking tests for every job that I qualified for, and in 1999, I scored pretty high on the ASO test, and I started going on interviews. And I had, I'd made a change in my life, and I was being completely honest and upfront with everybody about everything that had happened in the past, and I told these folks when I would go and interview that I'd been fired previously, and most of them said, "Thank you very much." And I got the letter, "You were among very, many very qualified candidates," but, and, you know, that went on for a while. I went on 30 interviews, and on the 30th interview, I went to the planning-
30 interviews you did?
30 interviews, yeah. I saved all the certifications and all the rejection letters, and on the 30th interview, I went to the planning department. And something clicked with me and the folks there at the planning department, and they called me up and offered me the job, and I was kind of shocked, and I thought, you know, you know, I told them, you know, that I was fired before, right? And they said, "We talked to our director, and he says it's a non-issue. If, you know, if we like you, we're going to bring you back." So, that's the reason I wanted to come down here and get this award, not to brag or anything, because, you know, like Doug before me said, I'm humbled to be here. I really, really am. And, you know, I wanted to come down here and put it on record and thank those people for what they did for me, because it changed my life. It really did. And the people that were there in my interview was Kelly Phillips, and Dave Jimenez, who's now retired, Anna Rhodes, who's passed away, and the director that said it was a non-issue was Tom Hutchings, and he's retired now. And I also want to thank my family for having faith in me and for always being there for me, especially my wife Cindy Jo, who retired from county service in 2014 with over 32 years, and my daughter Rachel, who's about to get her bachelor's at Sac State, who's been a constant joy in my life. And thank you all very much for allowing me this opportunity to come down here and talk to you.
Well, thank you, Mike. Congratulations on 30 years of service, with a little interruption between there, it sounded like, but-
Thank you.
Nonetheless, your persistence, obviously perseverance, paid off, and you've been able to work for this organization. So, you've worked in planning department and general services, is that correct?
Yes, planning department, and then after planning department, I transferred to accounting and fiscal services, part of MSA, which is all different now. AFS is gone, and-
Right.
But then in the 2012 org, they decided that we belonged in purchasing at general services, and so they took our little section, about five or six of us, and moved us out there.
Okay.
That's where I am today.
Very good.
Five minutes from home. At first, I had a resentment. They moved me from downtown, where I liked it.
Yeah.
My office was right up over there, but I'm good with it now.
Okay.
Now you don't have to pay for parking.
Yeah, no parking, five minutes from home. If I run into traffic, it takes me six minutes.
Works pretty well.
It takes you six, well, good. Well, thank you for your service, and certainly for your work, and for your wife as well, obviously. Between the two of you, it sounds like you logged 62 years with the county, so-
Yeah.
And still going, so, good.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks a lot. (Applause). We can do any presentation? Mike Morris, and was there any other thing with this?
You can't.
Was there any else with this item?
That was it.
That was it? Okay.
Okay. Item 29 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming September 2017 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay. I'll call Mr. Doss down. Bill?
(Inaudible). Glad to be back.
Likewise. I was putting me here at the-
Well, Mr. Doss is obviously a very familiar face to this, members of this board, and
certainly to the community, those who watch on Channel 14. Again, he's for a number of years, and I'll let him speak in a moment here and tell us how many years, but certainly has been a real, I think, clarion call for folks to not only be aware of their health, but certainly as relates to Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and I appreciate, Bill, that you, again, make the time, come down here, and certainly your advocacy, and I think work throughout the course of the year, and I think reflecting on importance for people of different walks of life, certainly of, as people mature and age, but whether, you know, men or women, to be aware of their health, certainly their surroundings, but also to know that with early detection of cancer, certainly many different types, but prostate cancer being the second, only to skin cancer, most frequent cause of, and diagnosis within men, that it's really important for folks as they go through life to do screenings, as certainly working consultation with their physician and those who provide their medical care. But I think to, in testimony here in a moment, with early detection, and certainly with change in, you know, in lifestyle potentially, that people can, you know, survive and go on to live healthy, productive lives, even after a diagnosis, and that's early detection that's very, very important in that. So, on behalf of this board, certainly in our work here, and making a call to the community, we want to, again, denote that this September, as we have in recent years, as a Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in Sacramento County, certainly commend folks to, you know, think about the issue and their own health, and certainly that of their loved ones, and to, again, focus on early screening to help detect, but also then to, you know, enjoy a long, productive life. So, with that, Bill, I want to thank you for your work, and certainly the American Cancer Society for their leadership on this issue, both locally and nationally and internationally. And already, we approved this, and so I'm going to let you have another framed copy. I don't know who you shared this with. Maybe you have a whole wall filled with the proclamations, but it's a very important and serious matter, and we appreciate your work as an ambassador for, you know, approaching good health and making us think about it this time each year, so. And with that, I'll present this to you, Bill-
Thank you very much.
And allow you to, again, give us a little bit of background, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. (Music). Well, Chair Noldy and board members, thank you for the opportunity to address the board once again, and since you mentioned I'm a repeat customer, this is my 13th year, and my background information is that you folks have been supportive for over 20 years, every year for proclamation for prostate cancer, which we really appreciate it. As a Director of the California Prostate Cancer Coalition, we want to thank you for issuing this resolution today. We are pleased that with your resolution, you're joining with the White House, the US Congress, the California Senate and Assembly, and many local government bodies across the country in designating September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Your resolution will help bring awareness about this little-known deadly disease to the attention of our community. Here are some additional interesting facts about prostate cancer. Today in the USA, there are over 3 million men living with a history of prostate cancer, and I'm one of them. In the average American family, the husband has the same risk factor for prostate cancer as the wife has for developing breast cancer. In the USA, one in eight men will develop prostate cancer. Also, one in eight women will develop breast cancer during their lifetime. Men also have the same death rate from prostate cancer as women have from breast cancer. Prostate cancer is a cunning disease, because in its early stage, there are no symptoms, and there are no self-tests. That is why many researchers are now suggesting every man should have a baseline prostate cancer examination starting at age 40. Men with a family history of prostate cancer, African-American men's, and Vietnam veterans should consider having their baseline prostate cancer examination starting at age 35. As stated in your resolution, the American Cancer Society recommends that every man should have an opportunity to make an informed decision about his own prostate cancer testing. Once again, we want to thank you for your resolution in support of prostate cancer awareness, and the opportunity to speak with you once again this morning. Be happy to answer any questions. Okay.
(Inaudible).
Pardon me?
Want me to do a picture with you?
Oh, okay.
No question, just a picture. I'll do that.
Yeah, great.
You covered it all.
Thanks again, Bill.
Thanks again. I appreciate it. Okay. Bye-bye. (Applause).
Item 2, it's a four-fifth vote. I would like the three of you to recuse themselves, so that we could reconsider and then do another motion to continue.
Okay. All right. We've got a couple of minutes here, and we need, we're going to need to revisit an item on the agenda. Item 2 required a four-fifths vote, and with Member Serna absent, and with the recusal by Member Peters, we're going to need to reconsider that and have to, I guess, hold it over till-
Let's continue it to next meeting.
To next meeting, yes. Because I know Mr. Powell and Mr. Thomas were here in the audience, and so they probably went away.
We'll notify them, and we'll notify them.
Okay. All right, so, we'll need a motion to reconsider. I think you made the motion for the consent counter, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, I did.
Okay, would you move to-
I moved.
Okay. And Chair would second to reconsider item 2, noting recusal by Member Peters, so we'll need a unanimous vote to reconsider this by the remaining three.
So, how do I, I just don't vote, or I abstain or recuse?
Yeah. Okay, please vote.
And the motion passes, with the record reflecting Susan Peters is recusing. And then I'll need a motion to continue.
Okay, and then I would ask the clerk, I would move to continue this to August 22nd, but would you, somebody needs to get ahold of Mr. Powell-
And I will do that.
Right away, because he was here, and I'm sure-
I'll have staff do that right now.
Yeah, because of inability to have four fifths on this, we need to, we need to continue that, so. All right, so moved. Do we have a second then to, okay, move to second to continue this to August 22nd? Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
And Supervisor Serna absent, okay.
And Mr. Serna is absent, yes.
Yes, all right. So, our-
Thank you.
Okay, we still have a few more minutes then?
One more minute.
One minute, okay. We, I guess, can start to call the item.
Okay. Item number 30 is the George Hill's Annual Report Presentation.
Okay. I don't know, Mr. Gill, do you want to make some introductory comments on this?
Nope.
Okay, all right. We're not by the clock yet, not quite 10 o'clock, so, Randy can take a moment to open his folder.
Well, since we're waiting till 10, I will make a quick comment. It's been a couple of years since we made this presentation to you. This is back in our rotation, and starting February of next year, every year in February, we'll have this report to you, so this is a catch-up for us.
Okay.
And it's 10 o'clock.
Very good. Okay, good. Thank you for filling in, Mr. Gill. Okay. Mr. Randy, good morning, Randy.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Frankly, it's always more pleasurable when I'm standing up here talking about a decrease in overall costs, but unfortunately, that's not the case this year. I'll be spending the next couple of minutes talking about what happened during the 1617 year, but the bottom line unfortunately is the overall program cost went from $13,813,911 to $18,145, excuse me, $18,145,143 in 2017. As you'll see in a moment, a good portion was an increase in the amount of claim payments made, as well as litigation costs. There were some, there was a little bit of good news. The number of litigated files that were closed without any type of payment having to be made increased, so we'll, let's look at the charts for a minute. So, Exhibit A shows the breakdown of total program costs and percentages by lines of payment, and the purpose of this chart is just to show the three lines of expense that we have, one being George Hill's administration fees, one being attorney's fees, and all of the costs, and then claim payments. So, frankly, if you look at the George Hill's administrative fees, you'll see for the last three years, the percentage of the overall cost has gone down by 1%, 1%, 2% respectively. The attorney's fees and all costs have gone down, even though the amount of dollars paid has gone up, the percentage of the overall cost has gone down, 42%, 33%, 31%. And then the claim payments have gone up the last three years, 51% of the total, 61% of the total, and 65% of the total. And I'm going to explain the increase in the claim payments in another slide, but due to nature of all claims that are handled in any given year, there's no way to indicate that any of these trends will necessarily continue, as it takes, all it takes is one or two big claims or lawsuits to heavily affect any or all three of these categories. And I should say, these slides are in your packet, so hopefully. Exhibit 2 shows dollars spent per category, and the increase or decrease when compared to the previous year's spending. So, that first column, 1450, 1415, that shows the total, $10,671,533, was a 3% increase over 1314, which of course, isn't shown on this slide. The most important thing is, however, looking at the 1617 category, you'll see that George Hill's fees went down by 13% from the previous year. Attorney's fees and all costs went up 23%, and I'll talk about that in a moment. Claim payments, again, the dollar amount went up, but the percentage was less, and then the total percentage in 201617 of 31% was compared to 29% of the previous year. So, the, there were several large, large cases in 1617 that generated that almost, well, $1.1 million in attorney's fees and costs. It required significant prep work by the lawyers to get ready for those cases. There were nine other cases that looked like they might be going to try as well, so the prep time was significantly more than it's been in the last couple of years, and again, we had two particularly large cases unlike we've had in a number of years before that. The 40% increase in claims payments, again, is due to, one, the gigantic case that we had to make a payment on. There were 10 other cases that totaled approximately, I believe it was $2 million. So, the point is 10 cases comprised 83% of the total overall claim payments, which is, again, just looking at 11 cases, having 83% of them represent the entire total, again, goes to the fact of primarily litigation cases being expensive due to either plaintiff's attorney fees exposure, or quite frankly, we just had some bad losses. And again, we take them as we find them, we get them in, and we handle them as best we can, but we can't control, for the most part, what the claims are going to be when they come in. We can control, hopefully, the ultimate outcome, but we certainly can't control what happens in a particular claim as it comes in the door. Exhibit C shows just the assignments to the five defense firms that handle your work. As you'll see, it's kind of bounced over the last three years. We had 62 up to 65, 55- We had 62 up to 65, 55 last year. Again, a couple of reasons, I think, for that. We've talked about before, the community, I think, at large knows that the county, just like the city quite frankly, takes tough stands on if we owe them, let's pay them, let's get rid of them right up front, but if we don't, let's go fight. And, you know, we may be either fighting because the amount that somebody wants to settle for is too large, which results in a lawsuit getting filed, or it's just a case of little or no liability, we have got to go fight to either get the case ready to go to trial, or if it ultimately is going to settle because one side sees something they didn't see before, it will result in a settlement. And of course, those depending on the amount we bring to you for approval.
I have a question before you leave that slide.
Sure.
So this list of attorneys, is that your choice, or does County Council choose those law firms and the assignment of said lawsuit to those firms?
Right. We have always, it's in the contract, it's been up to George Hills to assign those. There are times however, that I have consulted with Robin and her predecessors.
Is the list approved by County Council in advance?
There's nothing formally approved that I'm aware of, Supervisor.
Okay.
Yeah, I know we've gone through in the past several of these, we had other firms that are no longer on this list for a variety of reasons. A number of years ago, we did a couple RFPs at the request of County Council and the Board to look at perhaps some other firms that were out there. Two of these firms were additions as a result of that RFP, and again, several firms have come off for a variety of reasons.
Thank you.
So Exhibit D, again, shows those same five firms and shows what they were paid in the last three years. Again, I mentioned a bump in the legal fees of almost $1 million. And again, as I said, we just had two cases, big, big cases that went to trial, and the amount of time getting ready to prep those was phenomenal because of the potential exposure of those cases. There was also an attorney fee increase during the last fiscal year, which also attributed to that increase in legal fees. E, as I referred to earlier, there is some good news in that we jumped our rate of non-payment, if you will, cases that didn't require any type of settlement, from 50% last year to 57%, excuse me, two years ago, 57% this last year. And the reason for no payment can be either the case was dismissed by the court, we got out on a motion for summary judgment, plaintiffs decided not to pursue the case, so there are a variety of reasons for that. But the good news is, we always try, we kind of have a benchmark for 60% every year, and it's difficult to project and say that that's a number that we can hit every year, because again, handling claims is so volatile and individual things happen on each one, you just can't predict with any kind of certainty what that closing ratio can be. But we strive for 60%. We came close in this last year. I think it's important to note, because we, you know, we come to you many times for money, more than I'm sure you'd like us to come to you, and more than we'd like to come to you quite frankly, but again, 50% of the time in litigated cases, we're not paying anything to resolve cases other than to have to pay our lawyers. Exhibit F shows lawsuits by department. The Sheriff's Department has the largest percentage, they accounted for 40% as compared to 42% the previous year. And again, there's no real change, no real trend in what we're seeing from the Sheriff's Department. You see excessive forces, you see civil rights cases. There's no real change or trend in terms of the types that we're seeing. I just went back and looked because that number, 46%, is so large. And George Hills does a large amount of work for a large number of cities and counties in the state. And in looking where all of our clients, those that have law enforcement, either a jail or just street patrols, at least in most of all of our clients, at least 50% are of the new lawsuits every year come from law enforcement. It's just, that's the way it is. And, you know, as we all know, law enforcement has gotten a bad reputation over the years, and people see that, they read about it, and they think they're an easy target. And so we get a lot of frivolous lawsuits, many of which fall into that 50%, or 57% when we close them without any payment. But law enforcement's an easy target unfortunately. So we work with them, we talk to them, we have a lot of interaction with them, you know, early on when we're trying to look at the case and decide whether it's something we should pursue trying to defend. They are certainly involved, as are all other departments, when we're looking at, should we settle the case, should we not settle the case, having those discussions so we can all hopefully be on the same page. It doesn't always mean we are in terms of what we should do, but we try certainly to involve everybody in that process.
Susan, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I think, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask this question, but in the staff report, you break out alleged harassment, discrimination, and civil rights claims. And I wonder if you are in a position to make a judgment about, are most of those avoidable? I mean, is there something the county could do through, I don't know, education or some other way to reduce the number of claims in that area?
Yes or no?
Oh, thanks.
So...
There you have it.
A good example, let me give you a good example of yes. For a number of years, we would have rear-end law, rear-end auto accidents to where inevitably, it was a sheriff's vehicle, they were looking down at their computer, look up, too late, rear end. You know, when we started...
Xing while driving.
Yeah. And as you recall, a number of years ago, we had to include a corrective action memo with, you know, all the cases that we brought to either David or your Board indicating what could be done to try and prevent those. The Sheriff's Department in that case did put in a new operations order in terms of operating their computers when in their car. We rarely ever see a rear-end case, you know, as a result of that, looking down at their computers. There are certainly some cases in terms of what happens in a jail or either out in the street where deputies might become a little too aggressive in terms of what they do, not so much when we're talking about a shooting, but when they're trying to take somebody down, force escalates. There's certainly cases Supervisor that probably wasn't warranted, and when there's an IA investigation or other type of investigation, it's pointed out. And I think, I can't tell you within the department what they do necessarily in terms of discipline, but overall, from my read anyway, in terms of that 46%, I don't see a lot to where...
Well, I'm looking at the 36% in the staff report that say alleged harassment, discrimination, and civil rights claim. So I assume that is across all departments?
It is. Yeah, it is. And everybody makes mistakes, so it does happen from time to time, but I would say 75% of the time, and again, without giving it more thought and looking at some more data, I'd say 75% of the time, we did what either we should have done, what was in training manuals, whatever. And unfortunately, a lot of those, again, are either frivolous or not something that we're going to end up paying for, and we can't prevent anybody from filing suit, whether of course, there's any merit or not.
So those are cases that have, where the county's been sued, but they didn't necessarily prevail?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. That's that 57%.
Sorry, it wasn't there to me. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's that 57%.
I have a follow-on question.
Sure.
Little different vein, but relates to that corrective action memo, and you mentioned it Randy a moment ago, on items that come forward, and the threshold is for any settlement that's $20,000 or more. So the corrective action memos, are they beyond attaching to the actual claim itself? I guess maybe I looked into NAV. Is there somebody in the executive office that then keeps, tracks those to, you know, it's one thing just to put a memo, but then who sees to it that is followed through on and that there's not some repetitive actions that obviously, you know, our risk manager and our, you know, party that indemnifies us and looks at these claims? But I guess I'm curious, what's the touchback back to the county?
So once the corrective action memos come in, the deputies are the ones that work with the departments to make sure that what's been outlined is being followed. And one of the things that David Villanueva and David Devine have started doing is having monthly meetings with departments on type of claims that we're seeing and what needs to be done.
Is County Council involved in those too?
Yes.
Yes.
County Council's too. So it's a committee, and we are further looking at formalizing where the county exec, my position gets more of a formal briefing on it. And if you will, the top three departments that are on this list will come in and we'll go through what kind of claims, what are they doing to avoid it, and what changes we need to make. We haven't taken that step, but that's the next evolution that we want to do.
Well, and I think to the last point Randy responded to for Ms. Peters that related to harassment claims, that, you know, both in the workplace, but certainly by those who may have interactions with the county, whether they be, you know, valid substantiated or not, I think those are types of things, particularly if they're substantiated, that, you know, looking at that, because it's one thing if you have an individual employee, but if there's a particular, you know, culture attached to that, wherever that may be, any department and so forth, those are things that I think, to your point about this review, whether it's David Villanueva or David Devine, you look at those things because if that's the exposure that we have out there, then, you know, training can correct some of that, sometimes as an individual employee or employees, but, and/or just who they're interacting with, and maybe some difficult populations at times, or difficult interactions. But, so there is some ongoing review, and I think that's important, I think certainly Council and certainly our risk manager, but also our top county staff, so that, to assure that we don't keep making those potential mistakes again, without at least giving some effort to making sure that beyond the individual and/or individuals, that there's, you know, if there's a, you know, departmental issue, then that needs to be addressed as well.
Yeah, we're looking for trends, as you can imagine, and if we find a trend that repeats, then what kind of training needs to be done? The example that was used about having some different SOPs put in place.
Right, on the rear enders.
Rear enders, I mean, all that, we're looking at, and you can imagine, I mean, the sensitivity's pretty high on this. It's one of those things that does kind of ebb and flow, and we've got to keep an eye on it and to make sure that we are doing everything we can as an organization to mitigate the risk.
Okay. And then on this pie chart, what's non-jurisdictional? What is that?
So many times, people will sue the county when in fact, the accident, even though it's in Sacramento County, it happened in the city of Sacramento, so we shouldn't be a party to the lawsuit. So unfortunately, again, if they name the city and the county, it happened in the city, county doesn't have jurisdiction. What we try and do is our adjuster who's handling the individual case will call up the lawyer to file a lawsuit and say, hey, you got the wrong folks here, county has, doesn't own, maintain control, if in fact, it's a road case. And hopefully, we then tell them, we'll try and get a declaration from the appropriate department saying county doesn't own, maintain, control. We provide that declaration to the lawyers, they'll either then dismiss us with prejudice, meaning they can bring us back in if it turns out that we were wrong and in fact, we did have jurisdiction, but it's just to show that again, there are those cases that they wrongly sue us. It does cost us money when we have to defend them, but we try and handle those in-house and not have to hire a lawyer to do that for us.
Okay. One last point then, Randy, this was a little different format than I recall from years back, that it certainly shows, you know, claim numbers, which, you know, may or may not have some confidentiality attached to them, but we used to have, besides this pie chart, we could see by departments. There was a graph chart, if I recall correctly, some time ago, that showed actually department by department where those claims were paid out, because you have, this red segment of your pie shows, you know, miscellaneous three or less claims, but, you know, I guess my curiosity says to me that, you know, where else, and to have that charted out, it's not to, you know, have some graphic that shows this...
Well, you had a graphic at the beginning that showed the departments.
All of them?
Well, not departments, but what agency they sat in, I think. Wasn't that your first exhibit?
No. I can certainly going forward, rather than make it this restrictional in terms of just showing either the, you know, three or more has its own, as opposed to showing each individual, that's easy to do.
Yeah. Yeah, again, it just would be helpful, because I mean, I don't know if, you know, what other department, I mean, there's a lot of departments in the county, so is in the red, is that airports, is it, you know, ag commissioner, is it voter registration, maybe there's zeros on all of those, and so I don't want to presume, it's just, I think, without again, having to get into the detail of each case, to have a little more idea what's in that miscellaneous category.
Okay.
So, okay. Thanks. All right.
Exhibit G, I think Supervisor Peters, you were referring to the 36%. The 36% is other personal injury cases again, which are the harassment, discrimination, ones that don't involve an actual physical injury. Those can come from any department. It's not just sheriff, it's not, you know, anybody that is guilty of discrimination or some other event that causes personal injury, emotional distress, that sort of thing, that falls into this 36%, where the other bodily injury, the 35%, can be trip and falls, can be road cases, can be Sheriff's Department, where an allegation of excessive force and somebody's hurt. So that's how these break out. Similar that we've done in the past, and again, there is a non-jurisdictional because that was the allegation, but we did get out of those cases.
Thanks.
And Exhibit H is just showing, it's what, 13 years, I guess, of claims, just kind of showing a trend, what's happened over the last 13 years.
Need to change the slide Randy, if you could.
I'm sorry?
You just got Exhibit F up there.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
Again, two years ago, 624, 627. There were a couple old watermarks, 512, 565. You know, this 667 may represent that a lot of those could develop into lawsuits. That's what, 120-some, 22 more, I guess, in the previous year. So that, on one hand, could affect what happens next year in terms of an increase in claim payments or litigation costs, but again, if they're small claims, then that isn't necessarily going to have a relationship in terms of more claims means higher costs. That doesn't mean that at all, so. That's it, and then I have included, I was in a board session a number of months ago, and I believe it was Supervisor Peters that asked for the old breakout in terms of showing what each of the defense council were doing in terms of settling and that sort of thing, and it's at the back of your packet here, so.
I had one further question, and it came up because you did tell us who these other firms were. Do we, as the county, ever hire someone to defend us who has sued us in the past?
To perform legal services?
Yeah. I don't know.
Not to my knowledge.
I realize you guys kind of divvy up in defense and prosecution, but...
Yeah, I mean, all these firms are typically 90% if not more, strictly handling defense work, as opposed to the people that would sue us, be plaintiff's lawyers.
But they don't have both sides of the house in one firm?
There may be a law firm, big enough, that would have some plaintiff's lawyers in their firm, but they're not the ones that are handling the defense, they would be in a different unit. Porter Scott, for example, I mean, they're a large, large firm, and there's some lawyers that get plaintiff's cases, and they don't do the county's defense work, they've never been involved in the Sac County case, so it'd be a conflict, so no.
Well, I thank you for providing this. All we ever hear is the bad stuff in closed session. We don't get to hear that you actually made a lot of progress and we don't see most of the suits, so it, for me, it really helps.
Great, thank you. Any more questions?
Any other questions? No, it's good. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
So we'll be back on February 18, another report.
All right. Okay, receiving file. All right. We're now at 10:23, so we can call the 10:15 item.
Okay, item 31 is the extension of the proclamation of local state of emergency due to extreme winter storms of January and February 2017, and storm recovery update.
Before you do that, I just want to acknowledge, Mr. Page, before you leave the chambers, Steve? Just wanted to say thank you for your service to the county as well, as I understand you left county service, but thank you so much for your good work over the years, so.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Take care. Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Craig just said that because I wanted to watch George Hills.
Come on down, Randy. Steve thought he'd get out of here quietly, I know he doesn't like all the attention, but come on down.
You know, I've worked with Steve for 20-plus years and frankly, what he's done to help George Hills, the information he's provided, the camaraderie, the team approach that we've had, we couldn't have done what we've done without him. So I greatly appreciate it, I can't say any more than two minutes' amount of thanks.
Wish you well in retirement, Steve. Thanks. Good. Thanks, Randy. Okay. Good. Now, the other Steve, Mr. can tell me.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Steve can tell me from Sacramento County Office for Emergency Services, and I just have a quick update on the storms that we had in January, February of this year. Can I figure out how to work this? Is it this here? Thank you. Okay, just for a quick update, we had two storms, they separated the storms in January, so we had two. One was FEMA 4301, and the second one was 4305. The periods was January 3 through the 12th. was January 3 through the 12th, and the declaration that this board made was on February 14th. For the second one, the dates were January 18th through the 23rd, and the county declared on March 16th. So, for the January storms, the initial damage estimates came in at about 69, 86, 464. That was countywide. And then for the Sacramento County departments, it was $3 million, $425,084. The initial damage estimates for the second storm of January, countywide, was $745,861, and the Sacramento County Department's share of that was $945,769. Continuing the January storm, we submitted a request for public assistance to Cal OES and FEMA. That was submitted on the 3rd of April. They held a briefing for the county and all of the special districts within the county. At that meeting, all the county departments and the reclamation districts were told that they have to have a list of projects developed, and they had 60 days in which to return those to Cal OES and FEMA. The list of projects basically is an itemization of all the damages that they have and a plan to either restore those infrastructures to their original condition or replace them. So, the first storm, 4301, the county's list of project submission was $1.3 million, and for the second storm in January, 4305, the submission was $372,666. Those are, those numbers are significantly different than the IDEs that were initially presented, primarily because we, I say the county and also the reclamation districts, had to determine what that cost would be, so they had to get people out to, contractors out to give them estimates. Some of the areas that were still too damaged to get estimates on, so once that was done, the, a more accurate number was developed from there. The county IDE, here's some of the major differences between the IDE and what was actually submitted. $1.3 million from DOT was redirected to the FHWA projects, was the highway administration. And then $1.2 million was RD costs that were included into our county DWR costs. So, that had to be separated. So, those were the two major ones. There was, the rest of them were primarily just differences in what they determined what the actual cost was and what their estimates were. We did a project application form to Cal OES, number 126, that was submitted, along with the federal assurance for assistance, and then the applicant agent, the agents for the county, or myself, Mary Jo Flynn from the OES office, and Fred Salimi So, for the February storms, 4308 is the designated number for it. The incident period was February 1 through the 23rd. The county declared on April 1, 2017, and then there was a request for public assistance. That was submitted to FEMA on April 13, 2017, and they held, again, another briefing to advise all the submittals to make sure that they followed the directions of the FEMA and Cal OES guidances.
Steve, I need to ask you, though, so, trying not to read ahead here too much, so, you did January, you submitted them, so what next? We waiting for the check? Are we waiting for, you know, again, we're approaching mid-August, still sorting through this, so what happens?
It's both of what you just said. Right now, there are already checks coming in, but there's also a lot of discussions and negotiations with FEMA and Cal OES as to what the actual costs were and what is eligible for reimbursement. So, there's still some negotiation going on between the county departments and those outside the county by their agents to determine what their reimbursable costs will be.
So, for example, you said FHWA for Department Transportation, $1.3 million. Has a check been received for those projects?
I believe the dam, the debris removal has been received.
What about pavement repair?
That, I don't, I don't think they've received any checks on that yet. Some of those projects have been approved, so they're pending reimbursement. Some are still in negotiations.
Okay. I guess for another update, then, maybe from Department Transportation, wherever those are, so wherever those damages occurred, you know, in the unincorporated area of the county, if we're getting reimbursement to make sure, for example, I'm just going to use New Hope Road, which was underwater.
Right.
Even in May, you know, they've done some pothole patching and so forth, but I'm curious, you know, are they going to get in there and do base repair? I mean, the road's travelable, but, and likewise, other areas and, you know, neighborhoods and so forth, what's the schedule? If the check has been approved, then is it on the list to get repaired before the next rainy season?
For that, we would have to check with DOT.
Well, I'm just saying, that to me is key, though. It goes to, you know, getting things back in repair, and if not, anything we need to know. I mean, there wasn't, bridges washed out, there was some abutment, work needed to be done in the Wilton Bridge, for example. Again, I'm just speaking in the areas in the district that I'm aware of, but I know there's all, you know, all five districts had some level of impact to a greater or lesser extent. So, I guess, I'm curious, this is all well and fine for claiming, you know, it's getting to dollars, it's the status of that, but I guess, I want to know, you know, what about the actual repairs? And if the check is in the mail and we know it's approved, then has that been built into the list, or are we going to go into the season without those repairs being done? We have the money in the bank and we'll do it next spring. Well, that may, you know, that may present some other difficulty. So, I guess I would like to know. I think it's an important point, so.
I know I can't speak specifically, but I do know that DOT has been out there doing a lot of the repairs. I know New Hope is, that you mentioned, is one that was delayed because it was underwater, and so I don't think they've done very much for New Hope. But in a lot of the other areas, they have, but I could find out and.
Okay, well, I just think, again, so if it's getting done, I mean, I trust that they're going to do it. I just, it's just a matter of, you know, if we're not waiting for the check, then we can do it if we know they've been approved, and so it's kind of those status, somebody's going to have that list, must be easily to, easy to pull up, I would think. So, if it's all under a FEMA header, so. Okay. Thanks.
Going back to the February storm, we submitted the public assistance request. That was submitted on the 13th of April. They held their briefing. The county attended, as well as some of the RDs, and we were advised to follow the guidances, which were the same as January storm, so there was no real changes from that. The list of projects were requested. They have 60 days in which to get the list of projects, and that date is August 14th. So, we still don't know what the difference between the IDEs, the initial damage estimates, and the list of projects costs are, but we'll know that soon. The initial damage estimates for the February storms, countywide, was $18,572,199. Sacramento County's was $1 million, 569,599. The project application form, the Form 126 was submitted, as well as the assurance for federal assistance, and the designated application agents were the same, Mary Jo, myself, and Fred Salimi. And this just kind of highlights some of the major issues that we had in the storms in January. We had the Point Pleasant required boat operations for rescues to assist people from their flooded homes. We also had power outages due to the windstorms and the floodwaters that left homes without power. A few of the homes in the Point Pleasant areas were without water, without power for a longer period of time due to some safety concerns from smud and fire. The New Hope Road, as we mentioned, was underwater for an extended period of time, and so the damages were delayed in terms of them identifying what they were actually caused by the flooding. And in February, we had to establish some shelters there because of the Oroville. First, we established it for the busload of students coming back from a sporting event from the Butte County, so we sheltered them for the February storms, but then later, that transitioned into a shelter for the Oroville issue. So, we had three shelters up. One of them was in Citrus Heights, one of them was in Elk Grove, and then finally, we opened up Cal Expo with the state, and we were able to move our operations from the other two shelters into the Cal Expo shelter. We also had the train derailment that occurred on February 10th in the Point Pleasant area. Fortunately, there was no hazmat, so it contained food products, so there was no big issue. They just, I think, removed the final part, car, train, I think it was about two weeks ago. And then on the 11th, they had the RCCC evacuation. The water got right up to the door, it was about a foot from the doors, before we were able to have them bring inmates back. The water started to recede. I think it was just about a foot from the front door. As you know, the agriculture is under a separate category for FEMA, so the commissioner, ag commissioner, is working on that. And then the Oroville Dam, as I explained, they had some costs for the sheltering, but also fire EMS and OES also had some for care of the homeless, for care of some of the people that were evacuated from the Oroville area, and for some of the patients that were transferred from the medical care facilities that were up there.
Steve, a question on that slide. So, the Agriculture Commissioner, is there a separate report, not just projected losses, but also reimbursements? Is there some?
Julie should have some reports. I know I've talked to her in the past. She said there's a long delay in doing the livestock and agricultural reports because some of the repercussions from the storm can't be calculated until later with crops. So, I would guess, I haven't talked to her recently, but I would guess that she probably has some of those numbers now.
Okay. I guess it would be helpful, again, not necessarily for today's presentation, but there's different pockets of information, and, you know, you're kind of the umbrella for making sure that we get the, you know, reimbursement claims in there, that we do it properly, and, you know, and working with OES. I think it's important, from the standpoint of the public record and understanding, certainly by this board, but by anybody else to be interested, if it's a kind of just information out there, even if it's not collected yet, okay, but at some point in time, that needs to be assimilated. That's my, I mean, my take on this, is that you ought to have it together. So, if there was XYZ and road damage, here's what the RDs, you know, here's got repaired, so people can legitimately say that FEMA did come through, you know, maybe, you know, and if they didn't, you know, again, it's just spotty information, I guess, and it's there, and we're doing the work. I'm not going to get caught up in paperwork, but I just think that there ought to be a little more meat to, to the skeleton here, so.
Until all the storm-related damage and costs were incurred from the January, February storms are reported to FEMA and Cal OES, the county executive or his designee will continue to request for the 30-day approvals for the extension of the proclamation of the local state of emergency. I'm anticipating that we'll be able to request that the proclamations no longer be extended sometime in September, once the February storm reports are in for their final costs. So, the recommendation from my office is that we adopt the resolution approving a 30-day extension to the January storm proclamation and adopt the resolution of a 30-day extension for the proclamation for the February storm as well. And that's all I have. Other questions?
Move the item.
Okay. Move a second, then, to approve the extensions of the resolutions regarding the local state of emergency for the January, February storms. If nothing further, please vote.
I do have.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Just one second, sorry.
Go ahead, Steve. Oh, I do have a very preliminary number from the RDs. They're reporting about $2.3 million worth of damage that they've submitted to Cal OES and FEMA at this point. That's not all the RDs, it's about 75 percent of them that have reported back to me.
Does that include RD 800? I know I've had some conversations.
800 was included in that.
So, their estimates actually were significantly lower than what the?
Well, I think, I think it was a combination of that and the negotiations brought that number down.
Okay. Okay, thanks. All right, thanks for your work, Steve. I know this is, you know, kind of preoccupies a lot of your time, so appreciate it. Okay, then, do we have anyone else, anyone else to address the board? I know someone had called in about an off-agenda item, but I don't see anybody here, so. Okay, that takes care of the morning's, except for appointments, I guess, if we want to do.
We do have item 32. You're acting as the Board of Supervisors and Sacramento Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. I need a motion to continue this to August 22nd.
Tom.
Can move a second and continue item 32 to August 22nd, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay.
That concludes our morning.
And ticket nominations? If people are ready.
You can do that.
What number is it?
37.
37.
37, yeah, 37.
Let me position myself to the microphone. Okay, item 37. You are continuing to September 12th the Children's Coalition, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, and the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee. You're continuing to September 26th the Consumers Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Sacramento Environmental Commission, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, first, we have the Adult and Aging Commission, Mr. Natoli.
Okay, I understand that the request to continue this to September 12, 2017.
Okay. And then we have the Assessment Appeals Board, Mr. Natoli.
Yes, I understand that interview's been conducted and that chief's recommending Carlos Anguiano, and to continue the remainder until September 12th.
Then we have the first five Sacramento Commission. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, just a minute.
Okay.
Got to turn the page.
Okay.
First five. Okay, chiefs are recommending that we nominate, reappoint the incumbents, Scott Moke, David Gordon, Beth Hassett, and Stephen Wertz, and also then, and Dr. Terry Jones, excuse me, and then, I guess it's all incumbents, and Dr. Lee Turner Johnson. So, all of those be appointed.
Okay, and that concludes that. And then Sacramento County Mental Health Board, would you like to give?
Yes, District One wishes to continue until September 12th.
Okay, and Supervisor Frost?
Continue to September 12th.
Okay. Next is the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. Supervisor Frost?
I would like to waive and appoint Ronald Seaman, please.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and that concludes that. Next would be our Sacramento County Youth Commission.
District One wishes to continue to September 12th.
Okay. Ms. Peters?
Continue to August 22nd.
Okay, and then Ms. Frost?
And I would like to nominate Arthur Sridhar.
Okay.
Hope I said that right.
And then Mr. Natoli?
Yes, we still have an interview pending for one of the applicants, but we'd like to nominate Graham Johnson.
Okay. Next would be the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission.
District One is recommending reappointment of Jason Silva.
Okay. And then Ms. Peters?
I'd like to nominate William Ishmael and request the process be waived.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
District Five nominate Marie Meritz incumbent.
Okay. And then our last and final would be the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to September 12th.
And Mr. Natoli?
Likewise.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay. Do you have a closed session, Mr. Gill?
Yes, we do. Two items.
Okay, so.
Are we going to go now or wait till 12?
We can do it now.
Okay, so, we'll do closed session and then return here for 2 o'clock.
Good afternoon. I want to call back into order the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for the August 8, 2017 session, the afternoon portion of the board meeting, and I know we've got a couple of items for hearing today. We have an off-agenda presenter, and we'll get to that at the close of the published items, and we also have a recognition and a presentation by some of the folks from the chaplaincy, so we'll get to that in a moment as well. But first, we got to call the roll to establish a quorum, and then we'll see if there's any other items of, in order we need to take, and then we'll go from there, so. Hello?
Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Cerna and Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. All right, any items then to continue? If not, then?
Nope.
All right, so let's go ahead and call our first item. We actually have a presentation and another presentation, so.
Yeah. So, item 33 is the presentation of resolution congratulating law enforcement chaplaincy upon the occasion of its 40th anniversary.
Okay. Well, I'm going to invite Mindy Russell, Chaplain Russell, to come to the podium, and we'll make a presentation, and then I'll give her an opportunity to make a presentation talking about what's happened over the past 40 years, so I'll be right down.
And this is Chaplain Rhonda. She's part of our community chaplains program. How exciting. I mean, thank you so much.
Okay, to start off the afternoon, then, we want to take the opportunity as a board and certainly as a. and certainly as a community, to recognize 40 years, the 40th anniversary of this organization, the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento, and its service to our community. And I know that Chaplain Mindy and her associate here will give us an overview of some of the things that you've been involved in over this 40 years. Mindy, I don't think you've been associated with us all 40 years, but a good portion of it. She's probably logged 40 years worth of time in about 20, but I think certainly this board and people in the audience will quickly recognize the efforts of this organization, because they are pretty omnipresent when either a tragic event, but some event that involves, you know, folks, whether in a very personal situation, or one that's of a much broader community impact. And they're there to certainly not just to counsel and to help people agree, but to help recover, to be supportive, and certainly have done many, many good deeds. And their good work is, again, as I said, very evident in this community. And so, this resolution, I won't read all the whereasings, but certainly details the foundation of this organization. Actually, it started out, I guess, as the Greater Sacramento Police Chaplaincy.
Right.
1977 was chartered, and went on to become, as it's known now, the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento. And again, Chaplain Mindy and her associates, again, are accompanied by certainly the professional staff, but many, many volunteers. And I don't know how many volunteers you have.
150.
150 volunteers who are on call 24/7 to respond to, as I said, incidents and accidents and community events, and not always ones that are sad, certainly ones where we celebrate life in this community and celebrate the work of those who protect us, first responders and such. But again, it's been truly a model for other communities, certainly in this state and nation. And I know that the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento has been recognized nationally by former presidents, attorney generals, and many others for their good work. And their ministry is one of obviously providing help to a community whenever it's needed and wherever it's needed. And so, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, and certainly the people of Sacramento County, Chaplain Russell, and to our chaplaincy, this board is very pleased to honor and to recognize you and all those who are associated with the organization for the good work that you do in this community each and every day. And I think the comfort and the counsel, and certainly the contributions you've made over now the course of four decades, and we want to wish you well as you move forward, embark upon hopefully another 40 years, if not more, in serving this community, and wish you every success as you continue to bring peace and comfort and consolation to thousands of people here in this community, or tens of thousands of people, but certainly as you do that throughout the state and nation. So, you're truly a leader, and we thank you. You've been a blessing in this community, each and every one of you, and we congratulate you on 40 years. Offer this resolution to you and your organization, and with that, say thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Can I take a picture of you?
Oh, yeah.
Real quick?
Yeah, we can have a picture. We'll do a presentation, and then we'll look you.
All righty, real quick. You want to take a picture? I have to do is push this button. There you go.
Okay, right here.
Uh-oh. Did it die on me? I'll take my card.
Good. Thank you. Now, let's you kind of tell us a little bit more about the 40 years of service.
Well, this says 30 seconds. I'll take a couple more minutes than that, okay?
Yep.
So, basically, it did start out as just the police and sheriff, but now, 40 years later, we are serving 19 different law enforcement agencies, 16 school districts, and several businesses, as well as churches and neighborhoods. So, we are all over this county, being able to take our professional, subjectmatic experts in the area of trauma, and taking them where people need our help at, right at that moment. So, we're the only organization here in the county that does these things, makes the death notifications for the coroner's office, and actually brings hope in very desperate situations. Last year, we did over 4,000 call-outs. What a change from the first year, when we did 24. 24 in 1977, and there was two chaplains. Now, 150 chaplains, and we're in, as well as not only reactive, but proactive. We are in the schools because our kids are in crisis, and this year, our emphasis is on suicide awareness, because as you have seen in the news lately, now we're seeing an increase in our young women. It is the second-leading cause of death in our nation, for teenagers between the ages of 13 to 15. We've got to stop it, and we are part of the solution. So, I thank you, Board of Supervisors. I've gotten to tell you a little bit about what we've done. We are nationwide-recognized, so all of the things that we do, that you read about in the newspaper here, and probably don't get everything on that, but the worldwide things from the Unabomber that was right here in town, Yosemite, we were there for the murders down there, the flooding, all of the things that are nationwide attention were called out to be able to help the families. And quite frankly, we do a good job at what we do, because we change people from being bitter to better, and we help them through the worst times of their lives. So, it's a strong organization. We thank you for your support, for allowing us to do this, and we just, our future, what we want to do is to continue to strive to train more people so we can be out there in more ways.
You know, Mindy, I would just say too, that you talked about some of the major events where you were, chaplaincy was involved, and certainly you were there in Columbine, and I believe even in 9/11 in New York City, you yourself personally and others. And yet I think about, and I've been at different places where you've been there in the time of very personal tragedy, and you and your counselors are there to offer advice. And so, whether it's, you know, something as personal as the loss of a loved one right here in this community, to something that, you know, makes national headlines, where we have tremendous loss of life and tremendous tragedy. And I think that's where, again, you really cut across those boundaries, and you have diversity of faith and cultures that are represented in your chaplaincy, and you, I think, are very sensitive in your training and responding to, you know, those situations, because recognizing we are a big community with many different facets and many different people from different walks of life. But you're there whenever needed. So, again, I certainly thank you on behalf of people. I know Supervisor Kennedy, you had some comments.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is, you know, the whole skill set of turning things from bitter to better, we could use that in a lot of other county departments, so.
Bring it on.
I do want to just one more time say, you know, thank you. I got to know Mindy during a horrific situation in District 2, and also many of the people who are of the 150 core. And it's amazing, you don't just touch the lives of the people who are directly impacted, but it's a ripple effect, like throwing a pebble into the lake. I mean, you really reach out and help the community when there's something like that. So, I've seen it firsthand. I want to thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
I concur.
All right. Well, thank you all very much.
Well, thank you, Mindy. And carry back to your members of your organization. Again, we certainly appreciate all that you do, and all that you continue to do, and all that you've done, and we wish you well, so.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Okay, with that, then, we'll go to our hearing items. I think you can call 35 and 36, I believe, together, and is that, you can? And then we'll have to, I think you have to be sworn on one of those, is that right?
Excuse me?
You have to be sworn-
On 35, yes.
On 35, right, okay.
Item 35 and 36 is the ARCO facility at Watt and Blackfoot Project, a zoning ordinance amendment, use permit, and design review for a property located at the southeast intersection of Watt Avenue and Blackfoot Way in the Antelope Community. The environmental document is a negative declaration. Also, we have the ABC license hearing to determine whether public convenience would be served by issuance of a Type 20 liquor license to ARCO AM PM located at the southeast intersection of Watt Avenue and Blackfoot Way in the Antelope Community.
Okay. Do you want to swear, folks, and just, I would just note, those that have signed up for this or may think you wish to address this item, the use permit does require an affirmation of the presentation under oath, so the clerk will swear you in if you want to stand and be sworn, so.
Okay. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So, help you, God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
Yes.
And when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Okay, very good. Thanks. I have several folks signed up, including the applicant's representative, as well as several residents from the area. So, we'll, once we have the staff presentation, and any questions from the board, and then the applicant's presentation, we'll call upon others that are here today to talk to either items 35 or 36. So, all right, Leanne.
All right. Thank you very much, Leanne Moffett, your county planning director. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I have two back-to-back presentations to provide here. So, the item before you today, the first item, they're both related to the ARCO. There's a proposed new ARCO facility at Watt Avenue and Blackfoot Way. The facility is located at the southeast intersection of Watt Avenue and Blackfoot Way in the Antelope Community, and the applicant is requesting to be allowed to build a ARCO gas station with an AM PM convenience store, an automatic car wash, and a Phase 2 adjacent 5,500-square-foot retail building in the LC commercial zone. The item was originally rezoned to its current LC zoning back in 1998, and when that zoning was put in place, the zoning ordinance included prohibition on auto service stations and car washes. And so, the applicant is requesting an amendment to that zoning ordinance to delete that line item as a prohibition. In addition, service stations are all required to get a conditional use permit from the Board of Supervisors, so they are also requesting that use permit for the ARCO facility, car wash, and fuel canopy with eight dispensers, and design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines for both the ARCO station as well as the adjacent retail building. Retail uses are permitted by right, so that component would really only typically be subject to design review, but we are running it through altogether as one project. This is the site plan, and the north arrow is a little bit off to the left, so it's a little bit, you have to kind of orient yourself to the north, with Watt sort of going north and south. Off to the right is actually the southern boundary. At the top of the building, there is an adjacent mini storage facility with the building that backs up immediately to the property line, and then there are also some residences on a cul-de-sac at the southeastern portion of the site. So, over on the left of this graphic is the auto service station in the middle. The canopies are out on Watt, and behind the service station facility is a car wash, and then the building on the right-hand side is the future Phase 2 retail facility. So, again, I think I've already mentioned that the applicant is proposing to develop the project in two phases, with the ARCO component first. There's also an easement abandonment to allow access from Watt Avenue. The driveway on Watt will be restricted to ride-in, ride-out, turning movements only. And then, the Phase 2 component will be the retail building, and then will have to be some realignment of drainage in the area. And there will also be a sort of drainage detention basin back behind the facility. The convenience store and gas station is requested to be open on a 24-hour basis. We do have conditions that would limit the car wash operations to the hours of between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., and the second presentation that I will be giving you has to do with their request to be able to serve beer and wine on the site. This is some proposed elevations for the convenience store, as well as a rendering of the future facility. And I wanted to point out, in the graphic in the upper right-hand side, you can see a lot of green behind the ARCO facility and the car wash. And so, there have been a lot of discussions about the potential for loitering in that area that's a gap between the mini storage and the houses and the new eight-foot masonry wall back there. And so, we have conditioned the site to fence that off with a six-foot tubular steel, aka wrought iron fencing, with only one gate entry, to keep folks from loitering or potentially camping in that area. The applicant will also be installing some LED lighting that has the ability to dim at night, as well as overall 32 cameras, some of which will be pointed back at that area so that that area can be monitored to make sure that there's not unwanted intrusion into that green space and detention area back there. The item was reviewed by the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council on June 2 and July 7. The Center Unified School District provided notices to families of students enrolled at the adjacent elementary school. There was public comment at the Antelope CPAC meeting on March 2, 2017. Those workshops had been earlier workshops. There were a fair number of comments by neighbors about the proximity and maintenance of existing gas stations in the Antelope area, questions about access onto the site, pedestrian safety, potential retail tenants, and the fencing design. There were 10 members of the public who spoke in opposition regarding some of those issues, traffic and noise, lighting and glare, sufficient gas stations and convenience stores in the area, concern about 24-hour operations, questions about alcohol sales, and potential increase in loitering and other nuisances, and three members of the public who spoke in support of the project. The Antelope CPAC did end up recommending approval of the proposal on a three-to-two vote. Staff has, is before you today recommending approval. We do feel that the site has remained vacant for the last 20 years. We've worked very hard with the applicant on a design and a set of conditions that we think can address the concerns. We've imposed conditions limiting the car wash hours. We've imposed a number of sheriff conditions, as well as the additional fencing that I spoke of before. And the applicant is proposing to have cameras and other security measures, as well as a relatively new condition about landscaping, to try to use prickly and other sorts of landscaping to deter loitering. The planning commission considered this on June 12, and the item is in front of you with their recommendation, recommended approval on a five-to-zero vote. So, this slide lists the actions that you would take. Those are detailed in your staff report, so I won't read them aloud here, but these are the specific actions that would be before you today. And then, this slide is kind of an oblique aerial that I'll end on, and it does show that tubular steel, wrought iron fencing, and the Phase 2 portion of the site, I think I didn't say this before, would also be fenced off. If they don't move forward to construct the retail building in Phase 1, we would also make sure that that's fenced off until they go back in and construct that retail building.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Leanne, when this was rezoned in 1998, a lot of automotive uses were restricted, because this was a rezone from a business professional to limited commercial at the time?
Mm-hmm.
And it wasn't just a auto service station, it was most automotive uses were restricted. Was there, the staff report just identifies that, but was anybody able to go back and take a look at the conversation? If I remember right, I think either Supervisor Cox or Supervisor Nilo represented the area at the time, and it must have had some discussion about this if it was a rezone at the time. Do you have any additional information behind that?
I would have to turn to Wendy Hartman, who's been our day-to-day project manager, to see if she has anything-
Again, I don't want to, you can finish your presentation, but it just occurred to me that that background would be important, so if you want to go ahead and go through it, then maybe Wendy-
Okay, I can go through the alcohol one, if you want to get through that, and then I can have Wendy come up and see what she might have to add on that topic.
Okay.
All right. Could I have the second PowerPoint up, and we can go through the request for the alcohol license while we're on this? All right, so the graphics that you're going to see are going to look very similar. I've pretty much already covered where the location is. The item before you is essentially, it's a request to the state for the ARCO AM PM to be able to sell beer and wine. This is in a high-crime area, according to the sheriff's data, so that requires the applicant to come before the board to request a finding, a PCN finding, before the state will issue the alcohol license. So, that's what we're here to do today on that. So, this is a beer and wine alcohol license. We've already looked at the site plan. This is the interior floor plan of the facility, and how it lays out with the cashier and sales areas. Again, they're requesting a beer and wine type license. This would be the first license in this census tract, although there are- This would be the first license in this census tract, although there are areas to the south along Watt Avenue where one can get beer and wine at other facilities and liquor stores. But this would be the first facility within this census tract, so it's not over-concentrated. The applicant would, has expressed the need for the liquor license due to the desire for their customers to have a one-stop option for gas, beer, and wine, groceries, and other products. The convenience store and gas station would be open 24 hours, however, as with many similar county facilities, we do restrict the hours so that alcohol hours of sale would be between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., so they would not be able to sell alcohol after 10:00 p.m. And we also apply our typical condition via the sheriff for no single sales of beer, wine coolers, and no spirits, although this isn't spirits less than 750, but no wine or spirits, or no wine less than 750. They're not getting a full alcohol. The application was considered by the Community Planning Advisory Council at the same meeting as before, many of the same comments that I covered in the prior presentation, since the CPAC considered the item sort of as one. And there were the same speakers concerned about that PCN license as well. The Antelope CPAC vote was the same as for the overall use permit and zoning ordinance amendment. It was a three-to-two vote. The sheriff does support this with the imposition of their conditions, which is a letter attached to your staff report, and therefore staff is also recommending approval. And the recommended action is at the bottom of the slide. So that pretty much covers the alcohol portion of this as well.
Okay, you're going to have Wendy come up in a moment. There may be other questions of you, Leanne, as well, but I guess part of my question will be to you and to Wendy. So what's changed, I assume, planning department recommended, or maybe you didn't recommend in 1998, and again, you know, 19 years have transpired.
Right.
But clearly, there was a heavy emphasis on no automotive and/or motorcycle repair uses, things associated with automotive, as well as restrictions on liquor store, bar tavern, and now we have both the PCN coupled with an automotive use here. Obviously, it has another building that may someday house a restaurant or something else, but I guess that history is important to me. I certainly was a member of the board at the time, and all I saw was that reference to that zoning ordinance. And I do recall those years, we had a good deal of conversation about numbers of service stations, you know, proliferation on many corners in the county, certainly design elements, and some of those actually, you know, over time have got approved. There's been improvements certainly relative to security and some of the landscaping requirements over the course of nearly 20 years. But I guess, I am curious, because clearly, whatever the board did, that zoning in 1998 made it pretty clear that didn't anticipate automotive uses, at least under that scenario versus what's being asked here today, so.
Right. I'll have Wendy get up. I mean, I will say, we have really tried to modernize a lot of our reviews of these AM PM-type stores. The board has, you know, debated and gone different ways on different stores and different locations. We have a more robust design review program, and we have developed over the years a fair amount of conditions, but obviously, it certainly is discretionary on the part of the board whether you think this site is appropriate, and that history may be relevant to that. So let me see what Wendy can add about the prior.
Thanks. And then other board members may have questions as well, so. Good afternoon, Wendy.
Good afternoon, Wendy Hartman with Planning and Environmental, Office of Environmental Review.
You have to speak up a little bit, if you may.
Sorry.
Stand between.
And between you, my friend.
There you go.
All right. There was a very brief discussion of uses in the original staff report from 1998 that talked about concerns with compatibility of issues related to noise, as well as potential uses that would be intense, such as hospitals or hotels for traffic reasons and not necessarily for noise reasons. As Leanne has mentioned, we have significantly updated the county's development standards and design review requirements to hopefully address some of the concerns that are typically associated with these uses. But it is a discretionary permit, and therefore is up to your approval on whether or not it's appropriate at this particular location.
So the previous rezon, it was 1997 application, it looks like it was approved in 1998.
Correct.
It was, at least from what I could tell here, and the attachment was country center.
Correct.
Did it involve any other property? Did it involve mini storages or any of the residential properties, or was it solely for this corner from BP to LC at the time?
It looked like it was just for this corner. They only rezoned this piece. The mini storage piece remained BP. There were some documents in the prior file that talked about difficulty in trying to develop the site over the years, and obviously, that has not changed in the last 19, 20 years since the prior approval of the rezon.
But limited commercial, limited only in a sense by what the zoning provides for that, and then any restricted uses that, which were largely of the automotive, and some other ones that could be, you know, again, potentially problematic with massage parlors, pawn shops, and other things.
Correct.
But for the most part, it was very clear about automotive uses being restricted previously, so. Okay, that's all I did know. Thanks. Any other member of the board, any questions of staff, this chair?
Leanne, I wanted to ask, one of the concerns from the public was around, there's too many gas stations. How do you determine how many gas stations in an area, and is it too many? Obviously, you're recommending it, so can you give me some feedback on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I don't think planning has a specific standard of what's reasonable. I think in a lot of ways, we do leave that up to the market. We certainly had issues in the past, historically, when we had multiple corners that all had gas stations, and then gas stations would go away, leaving a blighted corner. So I think that's historically one of the reasons for, amongst other issues, for having board review of gas stations, because it had been very common way back in the day to have small remnant pieces that had four gas stations at every corner, and only one survived, and the other three were small and difficult to redevelop into some other use. In this case, there isn't another gas station in the immediate corner area, so we don't see that sort of problem here. I mean, there is other facilities up and down Watt Avenue, but I don't think we see a particular over-concentration of gas stations right in this immediate vicinity.
And I had a question regarding the picture here that you have on the screen shows the wrought iron fence, but it is seven, the requirement is seven feet high. That doesn't look seven feet high, but it doesn't like, look like a really tall fence that someone couldn't climb over, but it could be. It is seven feet high. That's the minimum for the whole entire front wrought iron fence.
The wrought iron, actually, the condition specifies a six-foot tall wrought iron right now. We could make that taller if you wished. The required fencing is actually the rear fencing, and that's the eight-foot masonry wall. So this wrought iron fence that is shown here is really an added condition that's not a standard requirement in the zoning code specifically to try to keep people out of that excess drainage and unused area.
And six feet is probably a standard factory size, I imagine.
Yeah.
And the landscaping behind that fence, they're going to have that, it looks like grass. Is that what they're, they will be maintaining the landscape behind that?
They are, mm-hmm. They're required to maintain the landscaping. They actually have to come back to us with a specific landscape design, and condition number eight in attachment two requires the SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, be considered in the improvement and landscaping plan. So we'll be looking for a landscaping plan that doesn't allow a lot of shrubs that people can hide in, as well as planting types that discourage people from sleeping on it or laying on it, makes it, you know, less enjoyable to be around. And then part of it's going to be cobbled, because there's going to be a drainage area in there. So where the drainage portion is, there will probably be some sort of rock and cobbles on the ground, you know, not lawn. I mean, in general, the new drought-tolerant landscaping plans also don't allow terribly much actual lawn to be planted, so it won't look like lawn, per se.
When you look at the picture, you think you had a forest there.
What's that?
You look at the picture, it looks like a forest.
It does look like a forest in there.
I think it's a little exaggerated.
Pretty, so, yeah. So we'll have to be looking at the detailed landscape plan. They do, I mean, they will be planting some trees, and they actually, one of their exhibits does have a preliminary landscape plan.
But the Phase 2 isn't going to go in right away, but that wrought iron fence is going to be a requirement all the way around the front of that retail building, correct?
Yes, the wrought iron fence, before the retail building is built, the fence will have to come out and take in what's the future parking lot, so that's all fenced off with a nice wrought iron instead of chain link, so that people can't camp there.
And it seems like the, I don't know how noisy car washes are, but I'm assuming that was covered in your research, that the sound decibels, that it's under the required sound requirements for the residential, it's, the car wash isn't in front of the houses, it's over just a little bit in front of the commercial location, so I'm assuming.
Where is the car wash on this slide?
Let me go back to the site plan. The car wash is at the top of this exhibit. I don't know if I can get.
Top left.
It won't show up, okay. So the canopy is on the bottom, and then the ARCO AM PM store, and then the car wash is at the north, or the east side, which is the top of the white boxes in this map.
So it's that little, looks like an easement road almost, that goes up behind the store?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so it is closer to the mini storage, but there are homes, you can see the homes in this graphic here on the cul-de-sac, so off to the right, you can see a house footprint here on this map. And that's why we're requiring the eight-foot masonry wall in between the site and the homes.
Does that mitigate the sound factor from the car wash?
Yes. So yes, and they also have to comply with the noise ordinance as well.
I mean, in citrus heights, we had, it had to be under a certain amount of decibels, and so as long as it was, so that's what we're doing at the county also.
Absolutely. So we did a noise study. The noise study showed that there wouldn't be noise impacts, and if there were, they would still have to comply with a noise ordinance.
Where are the vacuum cleaners on that?
I don't think that there are vacuum, I think this is one of those ARCO ones where you drive through. It's not like the full-service ones, like the quick quack where you then get out and vacuum.
That's where you really get the noise, is the vacuum.
The vacuum cleaners, yeah. And the blower is presumably at, because you go in on the right of this graphic and you exit away from the homes.
They're on Blackfoot.
Yeah, facing Blackfoot.
And the lighting at night that shines into the back there doesn't shine into the neighborhood. Is that correct?
That is correct, and it would be helpful for the applicant to describe a little bit more. I understand that they're trying to use some LED technologies that, in this area, that are motion triggered, and so it'd be good for them to talk about that directly.
Okay.
I'm picturing it's something like we have in the county parking lot area over here, where the LED lights are on, but they're kind of dim, and then when you walk out there, they get triggered.
Yeah.
Because they didn't want them bright all the time adjacent to the houses, and then people aren't supposed to be in that area. So it would be noticeable when the lights go on if there's somebody back there, but that would be good for the applicant to speak about directly.
Okay, great.
Is that something that we can require? You said, I'm not sure you said that was going to happen. Is that something we could require?
It's described in their project description, so we could add that as a condition. I think we just generally speak to their project description, but we could add it, yeah.
Okay.
We might need to continue the item if we need to add it as a condition to get that correctly.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay, any other questions? If not, then thank you, Leanne. We have several speakers. Well, the applicant has the opportunity to come forward initially, and so Mr. Tobin, behalf of the applicant, and if you've been sworn, please say so when you start your testimony. Thanks.
Members of the board, Peter Tobin with Barghousen Engineers, and I have been sworn. This is a project that we've been working on for well over a year with the planning staff, and they've been really helpful on helping us actually design it and make changes. And our client, who's currently owns a couple of ARCOs, one in Rockland, one in Auburn, he's very successful in terms of a franchisee. He is, has an excellent reputation with British Petroleum and overall in the industry. So the key to a site like this is to have a franchisee that's experienced, and he's a no-nonsense kind of guy, so in terms of loitering, he has ways to eliminate and minimize loitering just by training his employees and constantly training his employees. So what I want to do is I want to go over the site plan, and I've marked up this particular site plan with the seven-foot-high wrought iron fence, and I'm going to point to that in a second here. But the C store in itself has a tremendous amount of glass, so people, the police can see in and out. That's, the design has changed over the years. In terms of cameras, a normal facility like this has 32 cameras. He's going to install 64 cameras. So 32 cameras will be part of the C store and the car wash and the canopy, and then the other 32 cameras will be placed throughout the landscape areas, and all of it will be recorded, and all of it will be monitored. In terms of loitering, the last thing a customer wants to experience is being uncomfortable. And I know Ravinder is really good at this, as previously mentioned. He's got his employees in train so that they go out there, they fix the problem that's happening, and they move on. They don't, they don't use the hammer principle on anybody or that. They just start talking to them and say, hey, you know, our customers are feeling uncomfortable. Can you move on? And he's very successful with that. So I'm going to go ahead and point to this exhibit here. You can see that right here in red, that's the proposed wrought iron fence. And because we're not going to install Phase 2 at this time, we're going to go ahead and bring that wrought iron fence out to Watt, still install the landscape buffer, and then bring that wrought iron fence down to a proposed eight-foot-high masonry wall against this area here. So currently, there's a wood fence from here to here. There's been issues with pedestrians going from this area and walking kind of through I believe they fixed some of the fencing, but it's pretty easy to get through there. That's going to be solved with an eight-foot-high block wall, and that was a requirement that the sheriff had to go from six feet to eight feet. So this entire area back in here will be fenced off. There's going to be cobbles in the back, and the reason why we have that is for storm detention, so it will not be friendly for somebody to walk back there at all. It's going to be slopy. It's going to have a little depressed areas for water to sit in and then eventually drain out. The landscaping that was shown in that one rendering, that's an example of a render kind of gone crazy with too many trees, which simply not having that many trees, that is, that's not the goal at all. So this entire area is going to be shut off. We've got the eight-foot-high block wall here and here, a tremendous improvement over what currently exists. A lot of the issues that we've heard previously from the neighbors is a lot of people park along Watt Avenue at night. They crank up the music. There are also people that on the weekends try to sell stuff along Blackfoot, I should say, Blackfoot Way. So that's not good for business, and I'm firmly convinced that the franchisee is going to take care of that. And just because we've got eyes and ears on the whole area, this area is a lot more patrolled in a lot of different ways.
Speaker Frost, any question?
So even though the county is only requiring six feet, you're putting seven-foot wrought iron?
Correct.
And the eight-foot block wall where it ends at the storage facility, is there an opening, there's no way, is there an opening whereby someone could get into this enclosed area there, or is that like a building there, or is it a wood fence?
This is a building wall that's about 18-foot tall, all the way up to our.
And so that block wall will go right up, no one can get through there?
Correct. It'll be completely enclosed.
And there won't be any neighborhood gate? And there won't be any neighborhood gate, gate in, from the neighborhood into that?
Correct, correct, there will be a maintenance gate right in this area here so they can get in there, clean and, and do what they need to do.
Thank you.
So, the, okay, the entire site is LED lighting, and what happens here, what we've created over the last few years is that as a car comes in, underneath the canopy, the, the lighting underneath the canopy all lights up, and as the car leaves, about four or five minutes after they leave, all the lights dim back down. What the franchisee has also agreed to do at, um, 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night, shut off the canopy fascia. There's the, there's the blue LED light, and there's also white Arco channel letters, he's going to turn those completely off. So that will also assist with, with any lighting issues. And in terms of traffic, most of the cars are going to be coming off of Watt Avenue, so as they come in, the headlights themselves are going to be towards the building, or they're going to be towards Watt Avenue, and of course, we've got a big berm along Watt Avenue which will break down a lot of that, a lot of those lights. So we believe that this particular development is going to solve a lot of the current problems that the neighbors have expressed over the last few months, and, uh, over the last several neighborhood meetings. We agree with all the conditions of approval, and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Peter, Ms. Frost?
I just, uh, had a question relating to the canopy, how high is the canopy?
Uh, the clearance is about 13 feet, the total height is about 17 feet.
So, but the lighting on the canopy goes, does it go down, or does it go out?
It's, it's all, it's all shielded downward, it's in, it's all recessed in the, in the face of the, uh, the ceiling of the, the canopy itself.
So it doesn't, it's not going to go across over into the neighborhood, it's-
No, not at all, we've, we've created, we've created different LED packages where, and we're going to use it on this one too, the lighting will actually shine on the car where you're, where you're pumping gas. It's not one of these old, uh, uh, canopies where it's just, it's, it's just way too much lighting, and it's pretty obnoxious, frankly. Um, but we're going to be using three or four different types of LED lights, like a floodlight, a focus light, so that, um, it, it's only, you're only lighting up the areas where you truly need light, so.
Supervisor Peters?
Uh, thank you, um, on the car wash, is it open 24 hours? It is open from, what are the hours of the car wash?
Currently there's 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay, and at 10:00 PM, uh, last car is out, do, um, are the entrance and the exit blocked from people going in the car wash?
Uh, there'll be, there'll be security doors that come down.
Security gate comes down?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay.
People wash, people, people wash their car at 10 o'clock at night?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, that's, that's one thing, it's, it's a good question.
The main thing, the main thing I was after was keeping people out of the tunnel from, you know, selling drugs or something like that, so that, I found that that's important to have that locked.
You know, and our client is, is a really good neighbor, uh, he even said, "Hey, if there's any issues with any noise, any concerns with people, we'll shut it down at 9:00 PM."
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Peter, so, this is showing a, a Phase Two, a lot of work's going into putting a wrought iron fence, uh, non-standard, so it's going to be higher, you're going to put in some sort of landscaping, obviously, you clarified whether it was going to be forested woods or something less than that. So I'm curious, uh, there's no requirement here that Phase Two be developed in any particular sequence, uh, I know it's a significant investment to put a service station in with all the pertinent structures, what's, um, you know, again, that, there's no condition, I could sit there for another 20 years and somebody come back in and ask for another service station along the road if they wanted to, so I guess I'm curious as to what is the plan, why wouldn't we develop this all at one time?
Well, he, he's currently going through financing and making the whole thing pencil out, uh, currently he wants to get the AMPM up and running, then it's a lot more marketable. So, uh, if he does develop Phase Two, we're probably looking at about a year to seriously get some, uh, potential, uh, buyers in there to develop that, so.
Is it possible there would be another, uh, liquor store in the strip center? In addition to what, the request for liquor in the AMPM?
I don't see that happening, no, no. Um, it's, to me, it's just retail, maybe a small, uh, subway, that sort of thing, that's the only, that's the intent.
Just to that point, in fact, I appreciate Supervisor Peters asking that, because I'm going to ask planning staff, so with this rezone, are they getting the exception for the service station and the car wash, but do the prohibitions stay in place relative to liquor store and to all the other automotive uses, or are we taking them all off for the entirety of the site?
Uh, we are not taking them all off, uh, if you look at the strikeout and bold, um, ordinance, which is your first ordinance attachment, um, you can see, uh, what is stricken and what is not. Um, so, a, a lot of the other auto items remain restricted, um-
I got to find the strikeout, just a minute.
Sure.
Is that attachment two?
Uh, it's the first ordinance, it's just ordinance, immediately follows the board report.
After the signature page, then two more pages-
After the signature page, it goes straight into the ordinance.
Back.
And so there are three items that are stricken, auto service station primary, um, auto service station, another version of primary with a bunch of other words, and secondary auto service, service station, rebuilt auto wash.
While you're looking, it says, um, it's more of a lodge, a fraternal lodge hall liquor store.
Yeah, there should be a paragraph in there, yeah. There's a formatting problem there, so liquor store remains prohibited.
Okay, so, what I'm, after, wanting to hear you say is that there will not be a liquor store allowed in the strip center, or whatever they're calling it, that's next door to it?
There is not a liquor store allowed in the adjacent strip center unless they applied to come back to the board and reamend this ordinance, which they are not requesting at this point in time.
Thank you so much.
I actually did have one other correction when you're done with-
Okay, but I, I wanted a question to follow on then, so, I, I found one, the strikeout, but there wasn't a prohibition against a convenience store, which would require a use permit, uh, in, in, in the original LC zoning. So I take it that you could actually have, you know, if, if, if this owner chose to, you have a convenience market within the AMPM, but if someone wanted to put a convenience store right next door to it, that's not a prohibited use, it may require a use permit if it got hours or beyond a certain extent. Is the ability to prohibit that as a part of this consideration today, because I don't think that that's the type of use, and certainly, you know, I want to hear from the supervisor of the district, but this was designed so you would have less objectionable uses, and, you know, that's arguable, obviously, but, uh, convenience store was permitted, uh, again, requiring a use permit, I may have changed over the last 20 years relative to that, but it would seem to me that's not something you want, to what Peter put, you know, maybe it's a subway or something akin to that, but, uh, and I don't know that Arco would want another, you know, competing convenience store, but I've seen that too on different sites, and so, not when this was an Arco. So is there a way to get to that point here with what's before us today?
Uh, there is, you are correct, there is no prohibition on a convenience store, and it is possible to sell, uh, to come back and request, uh, a PCN and liquor license to sell a, some amount of alcohol in a convenience store. Uh, that's not something that had come up, and we didn't restrict a second convenience store, we could contemplate that, that's not in here now.
Now, if you have any thoughts on that, Peter?
We don't, we don't have a problem with that, restricting it.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, I wanted to correct one thing, um, in the record, uh, from my prior statements about the vacuum cleaners, there is one vacuum station, when you exit the car wash, uh, if you turn left, uh, up against the north boundary of the Arco convenience station, uh, there is a, uh, one vacuum spot where you can stop and vacuum your car. Uh, it is generally shielded from the residences by both the Arco AMPM store, because it fronts on Blackfoot-
Could you put that up on the screen and point to it, I, sometimes-
Here it comes.
Trying to understand, north, south, corner.
Yep, so here's the, the convenience store facility, there is, if you pull out of the car wash and you come here, there is a vacuum station right here.
Okay.
And the closest home, uh, behind the facility is here. So I did want to correct that.
Okay, uh, and do we have standard conditions about, uh, the wall or something like that that keeps the sound down there?
Yes, we did, uh, analyze noise, and there are, uh, it is conditioned to comply with the noise ordinance, so.
Okay, and I, my understanding is on those vacuums that there are, I'll just call it different grades, for lack of a better term, the, the, some louder than others, and that you'd be required to have the lowest level sound of currently manufactured, uh, vacuum cleaners for cars?
Right, the, the acoustical report talks about pretty high-end acoustical domes that go over the vacuums themselves, and, secondly, they're, they're on timers, so after a certain, like 9:00 at night, 8:00 at night, they shut off, they don't work anymore.
Okay, well that's, the shutting off is good, but still, the, uh, you know, we, we don't want you to put in a inexpensive vacuum cleaner that's loud, that is one of the more irritating things to residents I've found, in my experience.
And they end up replacing them really fast anyway, so that's, you're better off to, to do a high-quality one, and, right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant, Supervisor Frost, did you have questions? Sorry, Peter.
Yes, I wanted to ask Leanne if we could add to the, um, those that are prohibited, vaping lounge stores, tobacco, liquor, tattoo.
Uh, we can, uh, yes, and we can analyze how that compares with the zoning code, I do think, uh, if we're going to be making, uh, changes to conditions, and particularly if we're going to change the list of uses, uh, we probably do have to route this back through the Planning Commission, but we can certainly do that.
Well, there may be, like, on this list, it says social rehabilitation center, it's the last one on the list, and it says tattoo shop, I don't think of tattoo and social rehabilitation in the same-
There's a format, I think there's a formatting issue.
Formatting, see-
You think so?
Well, you know, it doesn't bring it-
Oh, I didn't see that.
Well, I didn't either till just now.
Well, the next one up, it says, you know, parking lot and then the pawn shop, so, you know?
Parking lot or garage as primary use, pawn shop.
Yeah, I think the, uh, no, there's definitely some formatting-
Facility and then a sanitarium sideshow.
Yeah. So there's some paragraph ins that, uh, didn't happen here.
Yeah, and the next line has got psychiatric facility recycling center, yeah, that's interesting combo, and a sanitarium sideshow, I don't know what a sanitarium sideshow is.
Don't want it there, I don't think, though.
What is that?
I think whenever you see it capitalized, it's supposed to be on a separate line, so.
I think my worry is that 20 years from now, when we're all happily retired, that some, that a planner doesn't miss it, uh, because it doesn't have a comma.
Yeah, we'll have to correct the formatting.
Yeah.
So are you saying though, that, like, if we, if we, this is a high-crime area, and it's a, I don't know, the community would really like a restaurant or, you know, a sit-down restaurant, that's what the community would, would love to have, they've asked for it. Um, but, I mean, it, you can get a lot of these kinds of places that are just, you know, I don't know, they don't seem to promote community, I mean, they, they don't seem like a, a great addition to the community. So are you saying that this has to go back to the Planning Commission to add vacant lounge to it?
Yeah, I believe if we make a substantial change to the zoning ordinance piece, I think it would be County Council's recommendation that we do get a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Well, it depends on what's substantial, if, if you go through here and figure out wherever there should be a comma, um, maybe most of the things will be taken care of.
Right, bar and tavern is already prohibited, um, I don't, I don't remember which other ones that you were interested in.
Tattoo is already there.
Tattoo is already there.
You had tobacco and vape, though.
I was thinking tobacco and vaping.
I don't, yeah, I don't see that, uh, smoke shop listed here.
Well, that's not a substantial change, if you just add smoke shop.
Well, I, I think it may be, the zoning, the, um, planning and zoning law says, says that if you, uh, have something, go to Planning Commission for a recommendation for a zoning code amendment, and then it comes to the board, and there's a substantial change, it has to go back, substantial meaning not just a, a typo or a rewording, but if you're actually changing the uses, it needs to go back to Planning Commission for another pass-through.
But it can be done very quickly? I mean, because a convenience store, I think needs to be a part of that, too, I just don't think, I heard the applicant agreed to that part, so.
We would intend to run it through as fast as we, as time allows.
Which could be Planning Commission, you could, you could send it right back to them and say, "We want it back here in a 22nd," when do they meet next?
Uh, they meet on Monday nights, so, get it on the next available agenda, and-
If we chose to do that, obviously, we haven't got that far.
It'd have to be noticed as well, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions, Supervisor Frost?
No.
Okay, Peter, any else? You're done, no?
Okay.
All right, we have a number of folks from the community have signed up here as well, I have three speakers signed up, and I'll take those in the order that were handed to me, and we also have a letter, I don't know, one of the speakers may wish to address that as well, but I have, uh, Ron Morse, um, Nicole, is it Mealy?
Mealy.
Mealy, okay, and then Robin Poole. So, Ron, you're first, come forward. And if you've been sworn, just say so before you start out, so, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Ron Morris, and I've been sworn. Um, I want to thank you, I did receive an invitation to come to the meeting to speak from the board, so I thank you for that.
Great, the noticing's working.
Yes, it is. Um, I did attend the CPAC meeting, wasn't able to go to the Planning Commission meeting, and I thank the board for the questions that you've asked, you've obviously given it some consideration in this project, so I thank you for that. Sounds like you're pretty far along in the approval process, but I'm still going to state my opposition. I did submit a letter, I had five of my neighbors sign that letter in opposition for the same reasons also. Um, there's a couple of questions I would like you to ask of the Planning Commission, if you would. I did hear, uh, your planners say that there was only, this was the first one in the census tract for the liquor license, or the beer and wine license, and I have a, a map, it's not as, as fancy as the PowerPoint presentation, it's my chicken scratch, you know.
Okay, you can put it up on a spot if you want, do there, Ron, right next to you?
On the white square, to your right.
Oh, you're going to embarrass me in public here, have me put that map up there?
No, no, not at all, I mean, but if it shows, oh, other way, turned up, so, face up, oh, I see, there you go, okay, and maybe, turn it the other way, yeah, there you go, it does have all location, no, no, right there, yeah, that was, so we can at least see the map, yeah. Okay? I have to read it down here, too, my eyesight's gone with age over here, too.
There's another microphone closer to it there.
Yeah, yeah, can you, we'll get handheld, just a minute.
This is fine, I, I can bend over, that'd be fine. Um, there is a number of liquor stores and beer, sell liquor and beer and wine in that area. Um, I've got listed over, there's 12 of them, I've listed on there in numerical order there, uh, there's, within two tenths of a mile in this project, there are two convenience stores that sell beer, wine, and liquor. So I don't know what the census tract encompasses, to say this is the first one in there. You can walk south on Watt Avenue, you'll find the, um, Jesse's Food and Liquor and SR Food and Liquor Store within two tenths of, uh, two tenths of a mile. There's a, um, Shell Gas Station that sells beer and wine on that corner also, and behind there, there's a Food Max that sells beer and wine, all within four tenths of a mile. If you go north, seven tenths of a mile, you'll find, uh, there's a Walmart that sells beer and wine, there's a Shell, another Shell Station that sells beer and wine, and across the street, at Union 76, it sells beer and wine. In behind that, there's another liquor store, so if you get within seven tenths of a mile, you've got six convenience stores in addition to the, um, Walmart and the, um, Food Max, all within an area, so I don't understand, you say there's one in that census tract, there's eight of them there, within seven tenths of a mile. There's also three car washes within seven tenths of a mile of that development. I don't know why we need four car washes, that, within that, that, um- Location of there. Um, I should put my glasses on. Um, yeah, there's, and three gas stations, and this, this will be the fourth gas station within four tenths of a mile. And my concern, there always, there's an Arco, if you want to extend it to two, two miles out, you've got six gas stations, five car washes, nine convenience stores, and four grocery stores, because there's a Winko and a Bell Air that all sell beer and wine. There is no shortage, in fact, they say there's, there's an oversupply already, and if this is, project is approved, and it's going to be successful, which they are a low-price leader, and I suspect that they will be, it'll probably be at the expense of- of some of the existing gas stations, the convenience stores in there. And as you already mentioned, they're very hard to redevelop. We have a serious homeless problem in that area. There's a recycling area right behind that liquor store, two tenths of a mile from this project. If there's going to be a 24-hour operation, there's no 24-hour operation in this area. All the homeless and the people are going to congregate to that area, excuse me. Also in that area, too, just to give you a general picture of it, to the south of it, there's a condominium complex. And they mentioned north, excuse me, east of it, there is a residential area back there in addition to the storage area. Across the street on the north side is an apartment complex. I live on Scotland Drive on the west side, and we're a single-family residential district. I understand this property has had a problem being developed, but we have an oversupply of these convenience stores and beer and wine stores and undersupply of residential housing. And my recommendation is the board encourage the developer, if they're having trouble developing it, to develop it, since it's already a residential area, to redevelop it. And since we have a shortage of residential housing, that they redevelop it as a residential area if they're having trouble selling it.
Ron, if you could summarize, please. If you could summarize, give everybody three minutes, so if you wanted anything else you want to say.
Well, I was hoping, since I've got five neighbors I'm speaking for, that would give me some time. But my summarize is that we have an oversupply of this. I'd like you to question staff regarding the representation. This is the first, you know, beer and wine in that census tract when it's clearly not. And, and I'm in opposition to it because I like to see something else in there, residential housing or a residence. But they can go ahead and sell the property. It'd be a nice infill project since it's surrounded by residential, excuse me, property in the area. And if they are successful in keeping people out of there, we already have a problem. Along Watt Avenue, they have, I don't know how to describe it, but they have these cutouts where they put these trees in there along the sidewalk, which is county property and maintained. What will happen if they can't keep in there? They're going to come across. We already have a problem with them sleeping in those areas right by our backyards.
Okay.
Thank you. Do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ron. Yeah, thank you for your diagram. Every staff can be prepared to talk at the end of the testimony about, about the census tracts.
We have a good graphic.
You usually give us a map, we don't.
It's attachment three to your PCN report, so if you look in that staff report, and it shows that there are nearby places where you can buy beer and wine, and it clearly shows what the census tract is, which doesn't necessarily align. That's why we map things out a mile away, rather than just relying on the census tract. So that is.
And Ron, I don't know if you have access to this, the staff report did have it, it was available. It shows the radius within a mile. And census tracts don't necessarily align where our liquor licenses are. They use major streets or other streets and so forth. But it does show, as you described, you know, other locations that you have on-sale or off-sale licenses. So I don't know if somebody has a copy of the staff report, maybe we could share that with Mr. Morse, so. Yeah. Manuel, do you want to?
Yeah, Manuel, he is senior planner. Yeah, with census tracts, as I explained, it runs on populations based on the census tracts that they do every, census that they do every 10 years. And a lot of times at an intersection, it could be four different census tracts. And so that's why, since we've taken over doing these about four years ago, we've offered you the one-mile radius to show you that there are liquor, a lot of liquor licenses within those other census tracts. So like I said, ABC does use census tracts as determining how many are allotted in each census tract. And this particular census tract is 99% residential. This is the only commercial pretty much in the census tract, because this went in a corner, and it's undeveloped. So that's why this census tract had zero. This would be the first one. But it's not necessarily representation of what's around there, like I said. So that's why we gave you the one-mile radius.
And the exhibit that was in the staff report does show, I think, as your count, some of these, I guess, maybe have gone away, but you showed, I think, 11.
Thirteen.
There's 13 active licenses in the area, pretty much coincides with Mr. Morse.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. Next, we have, here's Nicole.
Good afternoon. I'm Nicole Yuli. I have been sworn. I live on the corner of Antelope and Watt in those condominiums. We have seen an increase in homeless people. And there are lots more cars. Just in our condos, we have over 50 children that attend any of the five schools. There are four elementary schools within a mile radius and one high school. I see several children riding their bikes or walking to school in the morning. And I know that one of those children would get hit. Watt Avenue is extremely busy, right there at the light at Watt and Antelope. There are several car accidents every year. And when it comes to the kids, that's my main concern. I have an 11-year-old. Sometimes she walks to school, and she can't take certain roads. And to walk by that gas station at 11-years-old, it's just not right. There is an apartment complex directly north of us, and on the other side of the proposed gas station and convenience store, there is another apartment complex. So you have two big apartment complexes and a condo. What would this do to our property values? If the gas station were to go in, would that drop our property values, or would it increase our property values? We're really concerned about the high traffic, turning in and turning out. That's another major concern. Watt Avenue is really booked, especially in the morning, at around 5:00. And having to add extra time because you've got 100-plus cars just to go pick up your child isn't fair for any parent. Like I said, our crime has gone up, and we are very concerned about the alcohol, the drug use that comes with that. The gentleman before me stated the homeless, and it's, when your child finds a needle in the street, it's very sad. And no child should have to go through that. And with the alcohol and that location, with all the crime, it's just going to get worse. And I think that we shouldn't, we shouldn't allow it. So I am opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, and then Robin, Robin Poehl. And Robin's the last speaker I've signed up, so if there's anybody else who wishes to address this, get a format, otherwise Robin will be the last speaker.
Hi, my name is Robin Poehl, and I have been sworn.
Thanks, Ron.
Basically, I concur with everything that this gentleman said, and also with what Nicole said. I am also in that condominium, which is right around the corner. So I have lots of time. The concern that, additionally, that we have, like Nicole said, about the homeless population also. The gentleman said that there are two gas stations across the street. One of them already has a recycling center. So anytime you go into this, this food store here, it's also homeless people because of this recycling center. Now, once, these are not 24-hour establishments, so once they close, they're all going to matriculate over to the 24-hour store. And this sounds really bad, and I mean no disrespect, but they're going to go over there and go through their garbage. Okay? And like I said, I mean no disrespect. This side has already been dealt with, okay? They, it's, it's a new place, okay? And everything, unfortunately, it just brings a different clientele. The gentleman talked about a wall going around the area. If you were to go to that wall and go less than 50 feet, you will find the entrance to Crest Gate North. Like I say, I live by Nicole. There is no wall. It's an open driveway. You go into that driveway, and you're there. You're in open space. There's a hill here, a hilly knoll. From there, you have my front door, and the front door of maybe five other people. We've seen it happen already. I was out walking my dog the other night, looked up on the hill, there they were, coming down. It's increased dramatically in the last 12 years. A lot of it has to do with the fact that initially it was a prostitution concern down Watt Avenue, almost by Light Rail. And then as they cleaned up that area, everybody moved our way. So as far as the information that I gathered, and I really concur with everything that they have said, is I, too, physically went out to count establishments. I used, excuse me, I used the one-mile radius. And I found that within this one mile, and I was very diligent about the mile, lest anybody have any questions, I found 17 establishments that you could purchase wine or beer. I found seven establishments that they will serve you wine and beer, because we, we have very few restaurants or anything like that in the area. There are six gas stations within this one-mile radius. Let's see. That's really the concern, it's like I said, that we're having is the homeless, the lack of security, not necessarily on, on the individual that wants to build there, but also within our, our community. We only have a few lights here and there. That's it. And all they have to do is walk less than 50 feet. They're in our driveway, and there's no fencing at all. So it's very easy access.
Could I just ask, staff, is there a map that shows the complex where Robin resides, that 50-foot?
I'm not sure that we have a good graphic.
Is it across the street on Blackfoot?
No, it's, it's, as you go, here's the new, the new establishment, the corner of Blackfoot and Watt Avenue. If you were to go out, take a left, go less than 50 feet, you will find Crest Gate North complex. Go into the complex.
Down, down Blackfoot, Robin? Down Blackfoot?
No, no.
Down Watt?
Down Watt, and then you're going to go into the complex.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no idea. Yeah, I just, I was trying to follow you.
Yeah, yeah. And like I say, it's less than 50 feet. We already have that issue. We do have bushes on the back fence, and you'll find them already sleeping there, especially in the winter. It's, like I said, they are going to come from the other areas, and they will matriculate over. And unfortunately, depending upon what the other property is being used for, again, that's all-new area. And unfortunately, the individuals come either walk or they ride their bike. They all know each other. They know where to go. They know what areas. They know when we put our trash out. They, they're very, very resourceful. And so.
You're opposed.
Am I done? Yes, I am. But thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right. Those are the only speakers I had, so I'll bring it back to staff then, Leanne, and then obviously to supervisors.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have too much additional to add. It sounds like you want to have a discussion about whether you want to look at the restricted uses. There are a number of topics that have come up where we could look at more specific conditions. I don't want to try to do that in committee here today. If we were going to look at condition changes, I would prefer to continue it so that we can work those up and get them in the record. The areas that you talked about were specifics about the lighting. There's generalized lighting conditions in there. It's not as detailed as described today by the applicant. We have information about the cameras. We could detail that out further. And you also had questions about the vacuum noise, which is generally has noise conditions, but there isn't something specific about the vacuums. So those were the areas where I took some notes, if you want to contemplate this item, and if you want us to work on conditions a little bit more, that would be, those would be the areas that I would, I've heard so far to focus on.
Thanks. I'll turn to supervisor just a second. Just the last question, though, so was there, has there been any discussion with, it looked like that block wall was going to wrap around that side, but to the description that Ms. Poehl just made about easy access into the complex where she lives, it sounded like it's open from the street to get to the lane that then accesses their properties, their condominiums and so forth. Has there been, was there any look at that in the staff review of this, in the adjacent property?
We look, we did, our focus was on requiring fencing of the site, not an off-site fencing recruit, condition. And there is a.
Well, I would just say that I think there's some legitimacy to what's being said here. Obviously, people's behavior is not going to be necessarily dictated by the land use decision here, but you're blocking their ability to go either use this site, because you're going to, you know, proposing to do wrought iron with a block wall and so forth. So they don't go there, but they take another path of least resistance, which is immediately to the south. Looks like there's some areas that folks could find cover in without, again, having any particular site map and so forth. And again, I don't know that that's the applicant's responsibility. Mr. Tobin, did you wish to?
So I think what I understand is that the question is, there's, there's the condos here, and then there's the actual.
Lane.
Okay.
Yeah.
Talking here?
Yeah.
Okay, so here, here's Watt.
So the apartments next to us are not on there, and we're underneath the apartments. We are right there at Watt and Antelope.
No.
Yeah.
They're down the street.
Antelope, so you're not in this picture.
They're down the street.
Yeah, yeah, she's off the map, Peter.
Our units, our condos are yes, back, I meant 7661, which is all the way to the.
Okay, so there's no, there's currently an existing wrought iron fence along here anyways. So we're not changing any, any connections between these two properties or anything like that.
Okay, we can't have, we can't have any side conversations if you want to come to the, that's okay, that's all right. Okay. All right, Ms. Ross, Sue. Thanks, Leanne. Well, I just, I wanted to respond to some of the things that have been said. I, in general, I support this project. I'm sensitive to your concerns and appreciate that you have come down. I know the CPAC, you know, the majority of the CPAC voted to approve the project. I, after having a conversation with the developer, I, you know, relating to crime and homelessness, crime, I felt, you know, I, Antelope, we have had a lot of crime in our little business area, and that's one of the reasons some of the property owners are coming together and talking about property-based improvement districts, and how can they invest more to, to work on that. But to my knowledge, as a general rule, when you have capital improvement into an area, when someone moves in and they invest millions of dollars on a corner and, and there's activity there, you're not going to have as much homeless issues. And, I mean, it will actually improve those situations. And I kind of feel that they have been sensitive, the way the planning commission has, has worked on this. The wrought iron fence, the sound wall, the lighting is going to help with that homeless situation on that corner. But I, I don't know. I don't think it matters whether you have development or not. The homeless are in the parkways. They're in the city. They're everywhere. And that problem, that's a whole nother problem that we are working on. What really comes to my mind is that the community in Antelope has, has really wanted to have a sense of, you know, a downtown. They've wanted a sit-down restaurant, and they want, you know, they want less crime, and they want community. The challenge with Antelope is that everyone who lives in Antelope works somewhere else, and so they're driving out of Antelope to go to work all day. And so it's hard to attract those businesses for those sit-down restaurants. And, you know, there's a certain rooftops, a number of rooftops that you have to have in order to support so that the businesses can come. And so I, I think the fact that this, and I did talk to the developer, and they, they said, we want to try to look for a restaurant. You know, we're going to, that's going to be our goal, is to try to find something like that. I, there's no, I know there's no guarantee. And I hate to be picky, but, you know, some of these other types of businesses are not going to bring the element that we need more of in Antelope. And so. And so that's, you know, I know it's a little bit of a delay, but continuing it, to make sure we address quality on that, you know, quality for the future of the community is important. So I'm prepared to, I guess, move to continue the item so that we can just update the list of restrictions and also hear whatever my colleagues have to say about it.
I just want to ask you a question.
Can I just say that really, it's not going to be a continuance. It would be a direction to return back to Planning Commission with the revised list of uses.
Okay.
And then it would come back to the board after that.
Okay, in essence, it's continued, but it's sent back to, and it would be back, okay. Question of Staff, could we not restrict the use in the Phase 2 or require that it be for restaurant use? Make it very limited?
I guess you could make it extremely limited to restaurant only. I don't know if you want to contemplate some other retail activities.
I don't, I don't think it's a good idea because that's got to be market-driven. I mean, there has to be, that could limit what a person can do with their property because, you know, there's going to, it's going to take time in order for that demographic to serve that type of business. They've tried in the past, from what I understand, and it hasn't worked out. So to demand it isn't going to work. It has to be market-driven, I think.
Okay. All right, Supervisors.
Thank you. To this restrictive list, I would echo what Supervisor Frost said, that you add smoke, vaping, and hookah shops and convenience stores. It looks like liquor store, I think it's under Lodge Fraternal Hall there, but I'd like to see this attachment cleaned up here with all the things that we suggested.
That's what's a hookah shop?
It's along the same line as smoking and vaping.
Oh.
And open all night.
Yeah. And then I know the developer said that the car wash would be locked up at night, the openings, but I'd like to see that as a condition. And the LED motion detector light in that back area as a condition also.
Okay. Just get any thoughts?
So I will second the motion to move it back to Planning Commission with all the changes that have been suggested.
As soon as possible, if that, I know that's a lot to ask, but...
Yeah. Happy to prioritize.
Okay, so the motion then is to remand this back to the Planning Commission for inclusion of some additional prohibited uses, which will be, again, noticed and then returned to this board, probably in a fairly short turnaround, probably four to six weeks, I imagine. So that is the motion. And I, just before we vote, I would just say that this certainly has given me some reason for pause. Again, I was on this board in 1998 and have some vague recollection of some of the discussion about why we limited it. And I think the discussion about convenience markets attached to service stations and proliferation, there's been obviously some progress made, but I think some of those interfaces still can be very difficult. The issue, obviously, of homelessness and some of the other elements, probably is not a new phenomenon, but probably somewhat newer to the suburban communities, and we're seeing more and more of it in all the districts that are represented here on this board. So again, I'm certainly okay with looking to add to the list. I don't, the alcohol sales, I think it was clearly reflected, there's plenty of opportunity to purchase both on- and off-sale alcohol beverages in the neighborhood. I think the condition, I'll just say this, to the condition to limited to 10:00 PM cutoff, I think, helps cut down some of the very late-night activities, but nonetheless, still makes it available. And obviously, with the pattern of walking to and from the school, I was, again, interested to note, my last comment on this, that it wasn't more interaction. We notified the school district. I guess parents were notified. I appreciate that Nicole was here and has, you know, spoken as relates to her family. Because I know in other cases, we've had that, you know, quite a big turnout about, you know, proximity of service station uses, particularly with the PCNs for the liquor sales. And again, as one mom who was here speaking today, I appreciate her comments as well. So I'm starting to reserve judgment until it comes back to us. I'm not quite sold on this yet, but I'll support the motion to send it back to the Planning Commission today.
And just to be, just to be clear, it's only Item 35 that needs to go back to Planning Commission, so Item 36 will just tag along, I guess, when it comes back.
Just hold, hold Item 36? Yeah. Okay, we're holding the PCN, so. All right, so that's the motion. Everyone clear on that? Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, nobody, we'll be re-noticing, so the folks here that spoke will get re-noticed, correct?
Correct. Yeah, when it goes to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, thank you.
And then when it comes back.
All right, very good. Thank you all for being here this afternoon. Okay, we do have an off-agenda request to address the board. Mr. Warren, and I've spoken with one of my colleagues, and we're going to allow some additional time. I'm going to give you 10 minutes on the clock today, David, to allow time to allow you to...
I promise I will not even come close.
That's okay, but I want you to feel rushed and certainly willing to do that. So if you'll just identify yourself, and I know you handed us some information out, and I'll reset the clock, and you have at it.
And I'm told I have to tell someone that I have a PowerPoint coming.
Okay, so we have a PowerPoint for this one, so...
Yeah, they're working on it.
Let's see if we can get that up.
And if not, I've provided you with the same papers, so they're all written in front of you.
Okay, hang on a second. We're going to, let's get it up. We'll just hold on your presentation for a moment.
There it is.
There we go. Okay, and you have a clicker right there. Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Warren.
To quote Monty Python, something a little different. I am here today concerning emergency medical transportation. The county has what is called the Emergency Medical Services Agency, and they have established a protocol, Protocol 5050.13, which determines where and how a patient is to be transported in an ambulance. The great thing about it is that it provides direction to the paramedics and ambulance drivers in Sacramento. The downside is that it provides for one-size-fits-all. And therein lies the problem. There is no way to obtain a variance. In my particular instance, I have a pacemaker due to my years of youthful exuberance, and which has resulted in occasions where I've developed bradycardia, where my heart will actually stop, which is not a good thing. But also, I have another problem, what's called atrial fibrillation, which is asynchronous tachycardia, which means my heart goes too fast and eventually will blow up. Not a good thing either. The pacemaker stops it from slowing down to nothing, but it doesn't do anything with the asynchronous tachycardia. Because I have a pacemaker, there are certain medical tests that can be done only at hospitals that are aware of my medical implant. Some pacemakers are not MRI-compatible. If you don't have one of those, you're in MRI, you're going to find your pacemaker out of your chest and on top of the MRI. Not a good medical thing. So if you go to a hospital which does not have the information concerning my pacemaker, they will not provide an MRI. The protocol, and I'm sorry, without my grandchildren, I'm not good at this stuff. I know it's very small, but I provided you a full-sized print, lists the fact that if a paramedic arrives and I'm in atrial fibrillation, they're to take me to the nearest medical facility. In my particular case, the nearest medical facility is Mercy San Juan Hospital. Now, the paramedics in Citrus Heights, who arrive in Citrus Heights, and first of all, I want to compliment them, they do a great job. I've had, I've had the unfortunate circumstance to have used their service six times, and I'm grateful each time I see them, will transport me to Sutter Roseville, they will transport me to Kaiser, or they will transport me to Mercy, but they will not take me to UC Davis. Now, the importance of, for me to go to UC Davis is that's where my medical records concerning my pacemaker and my other medical conditions are located. And even though we live in the computer age, Mercy San Juan Hospital cannot acquire in an emergent situation my medical records from UC Davis. When I arrived in my first, on my birthday several years ago, my birthday present was a pacemaker, and two days later, I went to AFib and had to go to the hospital. They wanted to do an MRI, but as soon as they found out that I didn't, I had a pacemaker, they refused to do so. Now, there are two schools of thought. One is, a person who has a potential stroke should use a CT first, then an MRI. My neurologist is of the belief that the MRI is the primary and best source to determine my medical condition. Being transported to Mercy San Juan, over my objection, prevented me from getting the Cadillac version of the test. Now, there are three issues that I wish to address. First, should a patient who's aware of his medical necessity be allowed to pick the hospital of their choice? Second, should the patient know that there's a transportation lag? In other words, if I go to UC Davis from Citrus Heights, it takes longer than going to Mercy San Juan. But if my medical records and my medical information are immediately available, I would like to make the choice to know that the doctors who see me when I arrive there know what to do instead of when I arrived at Mercy San Juan saying, "Why are you here? And what can we do because we don't know what your medical condition is?" There's nothing worse than laying in the ER with one doctor saying, "I think he needs a pacemaker," or "I had the bandage right here on my shoulder," another guy saying, "He needs a central line," another one saying, "I think he's in pulmonary distress," and a third one saying, "I think he's in renal failure." Whereas, when I get to UC Davis, they knew exactly what would happen. That's the problem. Last, this protocol provides that if a paramedic follows my request, they are subject to loss of license or suspension because they didn't follow the protocol. They should not have to be facing that. The Supreme Court has decided that I can refuse medical care. It's up to, after you listen to a doctor, if you don't like their advice, you can do what you want. That is very important because if you're in an ambulance and you want to go to the hospital, and they say, the paramedic says, "You're crazy." I say, "Okay, take me anyway." If I'm in the hospital, they'll do it. If I'm at the doctor, they'll do it, but the ambulance will not do it. There's a certain irony involved there. Also, if I have, if I'm informed and I know what my emergency is, and I tell the paramedics, "This is what's best for me," they should conform and not follow the protocol. Now, let's assume for the moment I'm unconscious. My very beautiful wife, who's sitting here in the audience, has my medical directive. She is authorized to terminate life support in the hospital, but she can't tell the paramedics where to take me for transportation. Now, I have up before you, it's a nine-minute drive to Mercy San Juan. It's a 17-minute drive to Roseville. It's a 14-minute drive to Kaiser. And it's a 23-minute drive to UC Davis. I'm betting my life that my life will be better preserved at UC Davis because of their knowledge of my medical experience. Now, this isn't about money. It's, I'm not an HMO patient, I'm a PPO patient. I can go anywhere I want. My concern is about the experience I had at Mercy San Juan. I want to compliment the nurses, they're great. The doctors are in terrible straits because of the 51-50 patients that are running around the hospital, literally running through the ER naked. But they couldn't, the doctor who said, "You're my, I'm your cardiologist, I've never seen you before, how am I supposed to treat you?" That's not fair. Now, I know you can't do anything today. I don't expect you to. But I think that what I would like to have, because I've already tried speaking to Dr. Garzon, who's in charge of this committee, asking him to make the change repeatedly, and you have a copy of my last letter, which I sent, which was sent to him. And I've got three items for you. There's a memo, there's a letter I sent, and the exhibits that you're seeing today. He doesn't care. He believes that he's doing the right thing. I'm not going to disagree with him. In most instances, he's right. But one-size does not fit all. My negative experiences at Mercy San Juan, as you might guess, I'm Jewish, so they asked me, by way of worst-case example, "What would, can we get you something to eat?" I said, "Please, I'm Jewish, I have certain dietary habits." And the nurse proudly walked up to me, pulled off the lid, and provided a cheese omelet and three sausages. Now, the irony should express to you the frustration of the treatment which I received at the hospital. I can tell you a few other good stories, but I'll skip that for now because you have other things to do. I have provided each of you with proposed amendment. The amendment is very simple and straightforward. It says, if the paramedic says to you, "You're crazy to go where you want," and you say, "I don't care, I want to go to UC Davis," then they all have recording devices in the ambulances, they have pads where you can sign and inform consent and say, "I'm willing to risk my life by going to the place that I feel I can get the best medical attention." Now, I've spoken with Metro Fire. The additional cost of transportation from Citrus Heights to UC Davis is covered by the insurance. They don't care. As a matter of fact, the only reason, when I talked to the captain, who was then in charge of paramedics, the only reason they won't do is because this committee prohibits it. Now, I've had the unfortunate circumstance subsequent to this of being faced with the same medical condition. My wife had to drive me to UC Davis because the paramedics wouldn't do it. My wife had what we believed to be a stroke. Thank God, it was only a TIA. I had to drive her to UC Davis because the paramedics won't take her. I should not, and my wife should not, have to put our lives at risk because a committee says that one-size-fits-all. I ask that you call this up as an agenda item and ask why we can't have an informed consent exception to the protocol. It's just that simple. Now, unfortunately, there are people who abuse the paramedic system, but they're going to continue to do so. But reasonable, well-educated and sophisticated individuals such as myself, who know the risk, who want to make sure we don't die, should not be prohibited from taking advantage of the medical service. Thank you. See, I told you I'd get it done before.
Yeah, you did. You did within 12 seconds of spare. Thank you, David, for your presentation, and certainly we've received the correspondence. I guess, Mr. Gill, should we refer this to you? It's obviously not an action item today, but as I understand it, we have this advisory committee that, you know, recommends to us, but are they the ones that actually set the policy, or is that just adopted by this board? I mean, there's a lot behind this. I don't know, Krista, whether County Council could advise us on this as well, but certainly suggestions here...
I'll look into it and give a report back to the board.
Okay, all right. So did you get copies of the?
No, I got it.
Okay.
Could I also be provided with a date when this follow-up should occur?
Not yet, but when we get one set, we will let you know. And so obviously, we'll have to go back, but it won't be long, so it may not be the next meeting on 22nd.
No, I understand.
Yeah. But we'll, I know you've been contacted by several offices, David. Yeah, so we will, we will keep you informed. I know you've been talking, you've talked to several offices and certainly submitted correspondence, so we will endeavor to let you know as soon as we get the date.
Okay. Just one last item. I had the good fortune to meet with your chiefs of staff, and I provided them with all my correspondence back and forth so that when I came today, there'd be some degree of preparation.
Thank you, and they were very good. I know it was mine provided to me, so thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Warren, Mrs. Warren, for being here, and we'll take that under advisement. So with that, that concludes, let's go to County Executive Comments first.
None to that.
Okay, Board members. Any? Ms. Frost? Okay, none from the chair. That being said, then, we will be adjourned and be back in here on 22nd of August.